Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the May 8th, 2025 Board Meeting. Welcome to my fellow Board Members, MCPs staff and community members who are here with us in the room and online. All right. First, let's begin by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. I would like to start by asking my fellow Board Members to introduce themselves to establish a quorum.
Good afternoon. My name is Pranil Sivarama, representing students as a student member of the Board.
Good afternoon. Natalie Zimmerman, representing District 2, and a very happy Teacher Appreciation Week to all who celebrate.
Yay.
Good afternoon. Buenas tardes, Carla Silvestre, School Board Member at Large.
Good afternoon. Buenas tardes, Grace Rivera, Open, representing District 1.
Good afternoon. Brenda Wolf, District 5.
Good afternoon. Thank you for being here today. Rita Montoya, Board Member at Large.
Good afternoon. Laura Stewart, District 4.
Good afternoon. I'm Julie Yang, District 3. We have a big meeting coming up. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move approval.
Second?
All in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. We're going to talk about a few very big items: curriculum, boundary study, program analysis, legislative update. It's packed. It's packed. But before we begin this afternoon, I would like to formally announce the result of the election for the 48th Student Member of the Board of Education. All right. The election was held on April 23rd. There are some students in the audience. They might know more than 61,000 MCPs students cast ballot in this year's election between Montgomery Blair High School Junior Anuva Malu and Northwest High School Junior Peter Boiko. When the ballot was counted, Anuva Malu was elected as the 48th Student Member of the Board, receiving 62% of the vote. Ms. Malu will begin her turn on July 1st, 2025. Congratulations to Anuva. We look forward to working with you. All right. Let's give her a round of applause. So Ms. Savanna, clock is ticking. Let's get things done.
You guys are still stuck with me for a little while longer.
All right. Happy to be here. All right, Dr. Taylor, any recommended appointments today?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I have one recommended appointment for administrative position, and I'm thrilled to introduce Andrea Suayatoka for the position of Deputy Chief of Facilities Management. And if you'll stand, please. Thank you so much. I know that our current Chief Operating Officer is thrilled to add somebody new to his team and to have that right-hand person be considered this evening is, or this afternoon is just a delight. Ms. Suayatoka comes to us from an architectural background and brings to Montgomery County Public Schools more than 17 years of project design experience in the private sector, as well as at the county, local, and federal government level. She looks forward to joining MCPs in the Division of Facilities Management as its lead.
Excited to move this forward for approval.
Second?
All in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. Congratulations. Now, we're going to move to item 3.2. Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. We do have two former teammates who have passed, and we would like to recognize their service with some remembrances and some condolences. I have two resolutions for the Board's consideration, and I'll read the first one. Whereas the passing of Mr. Dominique Perry, a para educator at Seneca Valley High School on March 12th, 2025, deeply has saddened the staff, students, and the members of the Board of Education. And whereas during the five months that Mr. Perry worked for Montgomery County Public Schools, he demonstrated adeptness at problem-solving, as well as for his ability to work out solutions that positively benefited the parties that were involved. And whereas Mr. Perry displayed compassion, demonstrated exceptional skill when communicating with students, and held high expectations for their success, now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools express their sorrow at the passing of Mr. Perry and extend deepest sympathy to his family, and may it further be resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the family of Mr. Perry.
Move approval.
Second?
All in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. And for our second and final resolution, whereas the passing of Ms. Mary Doyle, an English teacher at Sligo Middle School, on March 17th, 2025, has deeply saddened the staff, students, and members of the Board of Education. And whereas during the 6.7 years that Ms. Doyle worked for Montgomery County Public Schools, she clearly communicated classroom expectations to her students, resulting in their willingness to learn and improve their skills in English and language arts. And whereas, along with being a respected team member, Ms. Doyle was a passionate advocate for her students, enabling them to take risks and feel supported, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education, that the members of the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools express their sorrow at the passing of Ms. Doyle and extend deepest sympathy to her family, and may it further be resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the family of Ms. Doyle.
Move approval.
I second that.
All in favor, raise your hand. That's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. We're going to move to item number four. This is the public comment session of our meeting. I have a long verbiage to read through if you, if this is the first time. The next item on the agenda is public comment. While the Board encourages public input on policy, program, and practices, and will consider the comments received, it is not the Board's practice during its business meetings to respond to questions, provide comments, or take action on the issues raised. This is a public meeting, and the Board expects the conduct of all speakers and members of the audience to be within the bounds of proper etiquette. Inappropriate personal remarks, rude retorts, or other such behavior is out of order and will not be tolerated. Those who demonstrate disruptive or disrespectful behavior during public comments may be asked to leave the room. In addition, public comment is not the proper avenue to address specific student or employee matters. Such matters should be directed through the complaint or appeal process. Each speaker have two minutes to deliver comments. When your name is called, press the flag button and speak clearly into the microphone. A yellow light and single beep indicate you have 30 seconds remaining. A red light and repeating beep signal that time has expired. Once you have finished speaking, press the same button to turn off the microphone. Following live testimony, which today we don't have, is usually audio and video testimony. All right. Copies of testimonies are posted with the other materials for this meeting on board docs. So I'm going to call the first six to come to the front, feeling it from my left to the right. Charlie Horiuchi, Davis Stein, Rodney Peel, Jamie Cobell, Laura Wallace, and Valerie I think I've figured it out. I know many of you. All right. So Charlie, you may proceed.
Good afternoon, Honorable Board Members. My name is Charlie Horiuchi, and I am representing myself and my partner Riley Cavlock. We are from Loiderman Middle School, and we would like to raise the issue of school lunches once again. In the past, the Board has allocated the time and money they deem necessary to school lunches. You invested in healthier options and more vegetarian meals. Yet even with this, we still walk into the cafeteria and the friend next to us doesn't get any lunch because they weren't able to find a vegetarian option. Why? Because we see them scanning through each meal, trying to figure out what doesn't have meat on it. It is almost impossible to figure out what or what is or what is what in a fast-moving lunch line. These events led us to an extremely simple conclusion. It's great that we have more inclusive lunches, but what's the use if they aren't getting to the students who need them? The simplest fix is clear in individual labels. Just a label on the top of the container where the type of food is stored. It could contain a name, maybe a vegetarian or vegan symbol. A select few schools do this in its simplest form, but should be a practice held throughout all schools. This affects anyone with religious preferences, gluten or lactose intolerance, or allergies. My sibling that goes to Montgomery Blair High School witnessed a student that had a severe allergic reaction from something that was in their food. Clear labeling on ingredients could have prevented that from happening. When we realized this was a problem, we reached out. We spoke with Board Member Montoya at our own school, and we are now here today. The absence of labels prevents students from across the county from easily getting lunch. It's a simple solution and can make a huge difference. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Stein.
Good afternoon, Dr. Taylor, President Yang, and members of the Board. My name is David Stein. I'm president of MCEA. It's nice to be here today. And I mean that literally. It really does feel nice to be here today. It's 70 degrees in here, which is quite nice, but, but let me tell you, it is not so nice in many of our classrooms. And I know you all know what I'm talking about. There are too many schools in this district that should be cool inside when it's hot outside and warm inside when it's freezing outside, but they're not. They're sweltering when they should be cool, and they're chilly when they should be toasty. And it feels like it's getting worse. It's hard enough to teach when you're sweating through your t-shirt, but can you imagine trying to keep your students' attention when they're hot and uncomfortable? And it's after lunch. Now imagine doing that with 28 six-year-olds. All those years I taught at Blair High School, the HVAC system never worked as promised. We always said there were only two temperatures: too hot and too cold. The climate problem is not just in a few schools, but let me just say a few. Loiderman Middle School, they've had a promised HVAC system delayed four times. Why do we have contractors who can't deliver on their promises? Tacoma Park Middle School literally had to close school early last week for excessive heat. Tacoma Park Elementary School, a kindergarten class with 89-degree classroom. That's crazy. Westland Middle School, Watkins Mill High School, Piney Branch, Flower Valley, the list goes on and on. This is serious. These are OSHA complaints waiting to happen. We need the Board to help us get this climate crisis fixed. This needs to be a priority. I know the superintendent's budget calls for infrastructure resources, and we are all waiting for the county council to do their job, but we can also make sure our contractors are working efficiently and our own operations are diagnosing and pinpointing where the most serious issues are. I'll end by channeling the great governor of Michigan, Gretchen Whitner, and reword her winning campaign slogan. She said, "Fix the damn roads." I'll say, "Fix the damn HVAC systems." Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peel?
Good afternoon. I'm Rodney Peel, speaking on my own behalf today. This is my seventh out of eight consecutive years I've had at least one kid attending Richard Montgomery High School, and my kids have participated in the IB programs in various ways, including the middle years program, magnet program, diploma program, and à la carte courses. The IB magnet program has evolved over the years in Richard Montgomery, and it remains desirable and successful for a variety of reasons, including most of all the commitment of the students, both local and across the county, but also our parents, community teachers, and administrators. There may be ways to make it even better, but I'm not aware that you discuss any of those potential changes with our community. I do appreciate and applaud the communication efforts of Dr. Taylor over this year. Thank you for being candid, informative, and timely. But I have concerns that we need better communication from the rest of MCPs, including about potential changes to the programs and boundaries. High school program choices and choices where we live are personal, impactful, and difficult for families to make. We need more options, especially for highly able students, both in and out of local schools. But I have concerns when MCPs begins its presentation this afternoon with a false choice of only two paths. Six years ago this month, MCPs proposed some of the same ideas, including making the RMIB magnet program smaller and regional instead of county-wide, which would have reduced equity for half or three-quarters of the county's highly able students to be able to access that program. Today, I worry MCPs once again wants to deny access to that program for much of the county without investment, commitment, or expertise to truly provide a comparable experience. Since MCPs began centralized communications and selections for the high school choice programs, there's been consistency in content and timing, but no lack of confusion. Every year, I hear from parents who don't fully understand their options at their local schools or outside of their local schools, and that's going to be the same with the boundary study that we've started. Increased capacity is more than just seats. Performance and outcomes matter. I'm optimistic that Dr. Taylor and the Board will work hard to make sure we actually are improving the students' programs. Let's take the time to do this right.
Thank you. Next, Jamie Copel.
Good afternoon. My name is Jamie Copel, and I'm a MCPs parent to a seventh grader and a 10th grader. And I've spent the last two decades working with communities across this country to improve school climate. I'm here to draw connections among your discussions of the Code of Conduct, the staff allocations for fiscal year 2026, and school safety. In the interest of my two minutes, I will only share the school safety portions of my testimony out loud. I understand that today you will consider a proposal that would require the superintendent to get community input from all areas of the county on these questions. How well is the current CEO program working? What, if any, are the challenges with the program? And what are the opportunities for improvement? I strongly urge you not to frame a community engagement process on school safety around such a narrow set of questions. I also urge those of you who are new to the Board since '21 or '22 to look back to the task forces on school safety to familiarize yourself with the, excuse me, the challenges raised in those community engagement endeavors. The MCPD played a leadership role in both task forces, even though students raised the fact that it expressed a lack of sincerity around addressing the harms experienced most frequently by Black and Brown students who research show are often criminalized for normal adolescent behavior. Any community engagement effort related to school safety should include a discussion of arrest data. What do they tell us about where MCPs needs to deepen, strengthen, or alter supports for youth? Who's being harmed? And how do we honor our commitment on paper to restorative practices in addressing those harms? The most frequent final outcome of a paper or in-person arrest of a student from '23-'24 was return to school. There's so much research about the harm of engaging young people in the criminal legal system. Consequences, collateral consequences, fines, I could go on. When we consider that most students are then returning to school, what does this intervention do? Would we be not better off investing more deeply in in-school supports? I hope that we can see the conversation in the community address the realities of the situation.
Thank you. Laura Wallace.
My name is Laura Wallace. I'm the Montgomery County Director for Jews United for Justice. JOFJ organizes 2,000 Jews and Allies from across Montgomery County for racial, economic, and social justice. I'm also an MCPs parent with a 10th grader at Walter Johnson. So when my daughter was in the fifth grade, she had a terrible day at school. It was so terrible that she decided she just had to leave school and walk home. As she tried to leave the building, staff stopped her, and things escalated. First, she got disruptive, then she got physical. There's a lot of ways that the school could have de-escalated in that moment. As I walked into the school building, the assistant principal was on the phone with the police. So I think a lot about that day, and I can't imagine any scenario where actually an uniformed armed police officer would have helped in that moment. And she's doing amazing. She's a straight A student. She just got a job as a lifeguard over the summer. And would that all still be true if her entire future had been based around her worst moment? So this afternoon, you're going to be discussing the student code of conduct and a resolution to evaluate the CEO program. I appreciate the language about restorative approaches that is in the code of conduct, but honestly, I don't see how the theory is being put into practice. Here's what I do see. Each of the last few years, MCPs has reduced the number of restorative specialists and reduced the stipends for restorative coaches. Proposed changes to the code of conduct take discretion away from teachers and rely more heavily on the use of suspensions. There's no meaningful accountability for school administrators to ensure restorative practices are implemented across MCPs. I want to leave you with this. Please take a hard look at the guiding questions for the CEO program resolution. Where are the questions about early interventions, mental health supports, restorative approaches, and positive school culture? My daughter's experience shows we need to do better than defaulting to uniformed armed police officers, so no child's future is determined by their worst day. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie Davis.
I am Valerie Davis, the convener of the Black Coalition for Excellence in Education, and I testify today at the request of a youth organization that does not want police in our schools. I decided months ago that I wouldn't enter this space again, which has proven to be a cold and violently dismissive space for Black women and the concerns of Black people. But when young people call, I answer. I have one ask of the Board and one impression for the public. Board members, require that the CEO program evaluation plan be presented to the public for input and that the evaluation be fact and evidence-based. As we all know, there is no clear evidence that having police in schools makes them safer. In fact, there is evidence to the contrary. So put the responsibility for putting them back in the responsibility in the hands of those who desire it, not based on their feelings of safety, but facts, to the public. As we witness the enormous cost to all of us of excluding and villainizing Black people worldwide, join us in shifting the narrative away from policing and toward community building led by us. Policing was first done in this land by slave catchers. So policing Black bodies is in our country's DNA. Students, immigrants, and other U.S. citizens who are considered unacceptable or useful for forced labor are now being policed. Policing takes many forms and is done by many people even in this space. It's the desk against the wall, reserved for the kid who's always acting out. It's the principal who engages who they want to, when they want to, based on comfort level. It's the Board policies that reserve testimony for unions and advocacy groups over regular folks like you and me. It's the administrator who decides to end a meeting because it's unproductive, or the people who are subject to no trespass orders or exclusion like me when we hear Black folks are coming into the building. That's gatekeeping. It's pervasive, unchecked, and notoriously anti-Black policing. That's why I said I wasn't coming here. But let's build community. That's where our power lies. The code of conduct and policing will not make our schools safe. That is an unserious conversation that allows those before us to continue to fail us in failing to address the underlying conditions and gatekeeping that create unsafe spaces like this one.
Thank you. And I'm going to call the last two public commander to come forward. It's Thomas Murphy, Bridget Howe.
Good afternoon, Madam President, Dr. Taylor, and members of the Board. I'm Tom Murphy. I'm here to make two brief suggestions. First, two years ago, I was here to urge incorporating financial literacy in our curricula. I'm here today to say it's still very important. I understand the constraints and barriers, but the need remains critical. The story is told that the goal is being incorporated in existing subject areas as appropriate, but I have no performance measures upon which to base any judgment. I just hope it's happening. It's an equity issue. It's really important that all of our students, regardless of their economic circumstances, are savvy enough to avoid walking off are savvy enough to avoid walking off the graduation stage and immediately becoming lifetime annuities for the financial services sector. My second point today is we need a formula for teaching our students how to spot misinformation. I'm providing you a copy of an article describing how educators in Finland are testing new ways to teach students about propaganda. I hope you'll have time to read it. I don't see this as requiring anything complex or costly, just some coordination within our schools. MCPS is already great at teaching facts and thinking skills. We just need to ensure we're teaching our students to tie it all together as they face a digital world often full of half-truths, misrepresentations, and outright lies. So when voices like those on Truth Social insist that the Civil War was only about states' rights, that tariffs always bring prosperity, and that pigs can in fact fly, but only in a tax-free environment, they'll smell the smoke right away. Our teachers and resource teachers are outstanding, and I'm confident that if we just make a point of encouraging a focus on this, they can collaborate and develop plans they view as suitable for each school setting and make it work. Thanks very much for your time and also for your service. It's a difficult time to be in public service, and we all owe you a debt for doing so. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. You made it very hard to keep a poker face. Ms. Howe.
Good afternoon. I wanted to speak to two items on today's agenda. First, we're getting close to the end of the school year, thank goodness, with a lot happening with both programs and boundaries. I eagerly await the update today. I do hope that by the end of the year, each student in a cluster that's affected by the Boundary Study will receive something in a take-home folder that clearly explains the reasons for the study, the potential impact on their cluster, and where to go for more information. I am really concerned, and I've shared this concern many times, that we're two or three weeks away from the point of initial options and maps being shared. And there are still so many parents who don't know this is going to affect them. I was at last night's excellent Community Engagement Advisory Committee meeting, which was very well-run. And it was filled with parents who were engaged enough to step up and volunteer, and more than one parent in that room did not understand that their cluster was in the mix for these changes. And that concerns me. As the program analysis is countywide, a similar flyer could go home. I would emphasize students in K through 8 as they're most likely to be impacted by any changes. We do have to build in adequate time to inform families of what is at stake. Second, regarding the student code of conduct. For a long time, I have talked to you all about plain language. I'm going to say it again. That document is really legalistic. It is written in very dense, very difficult-to-comprehend language, and it's not understood by the vast majority of our students. It's not because it's not written at their reading level, their lexile level. It's also confusing to many, if not most, of our parents whose first language isn't legal jargon, let alone English. While there might be a policy requirement for formal language in an official version, please invest resources to create age-appropriate, accessible plain language versions for different grade levels. Quick story. Six years ago, my son was in 2nd grade. We got called to the principal's office as we discovered what rule he had broken, and he did break it. We realized that had there been a picture book version of the code and the rules, he would not have made the mistake that he made. So students don't understand it at the level they're at, and we need to be meeting students where they are. And the primary grades is the age where we lay the foundation for behavior throughout their school career. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to ask to see if any Board member has any comments in terms of today's testimony. Mrs. Savan.
Yes, first, just want to thank all the students for coming out today. To Charlie, in terms of referencing the school lunch labeling, I'm just going to ask administration to follow up on that and then to sort of bring that back to the Board. I feel like that's a fairly simple request. Just wanted to get some more information on that as it comes back. But thank you to all the students for coming out today.
Mrs. Embelman.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who came out and testified and all the others who are here in the audience. I would like to see some information about our HVAC systems and temperatures in school, specifically that disaggregated data by school showing complaints of temperature outside of our contractually-bargained temperatures, which, for reference, is below 55 degrees and above 80 degrees specifically recently over the last five years, and then any subsequent HVAC updates relating to that. Thank you.
Ms. Rivera-Avene.
Thank you. Just quickly, many know that food and nutrition concerns me quite a lot. So I just, to Charlie's point, for having, you know, a child who is celiac and has a lot of restrictions on what they can eat. This has been a concern. It's, you know, as much as, you know, as a parent that you try to ensure that your child's okay, you are dependent on what they're going to be exposed at schools and so on. And kids are very silly, and they, you know, they ask the right questions and so on. But if you don't know what you don't know. And I think, I don't know what the current policy is on the advertisement of the food items that we're serving them, whether we do put, you know, all the ingredients out there so people know and so on. But we do have, I think Dr. Taylor said, we serve more lunches in MCPS than Disneyland or Disney World put together a day. So it is a big undertaking to do. But we also do have a large group of young people and children who do have serious allergies in our system as well. So if we can just look at that, that'd be great. And I know for the HVAC concern that we have been working, I know the system has been working diligently of actually doing, you know, this has been an issue that has not been touched in decades, right? And we had done a lot of Band-Aid stuff about fixing things temporarily only to learn that they're not working again the next year. So I know, Dr. Taylor, you have a great plan of implementation and actually looking at those schools who are severe offenders and sending teams that this doesn't happen. I know in my own district, we have had to close quite a few elementary and middle schools because of the heat. We had to send kids home, which is a safety issue. And I don't know, if you'd like to say a few words towards that so the community knows that this is something that you're working very hard at.
Yes. This is the condition that we have found ourselves in after many years of neglect. And it is something that we are going to be digging out of, not just this year, but in the next several years as we try to build up our infrastructure in HVAC. It's incredibly frustrating when we are working with partners. But I do want to reemphasize a couple of points, and I'm glad that you gave me this opportunity, Ms. Rivera-Avene, because the federal landscape and the tariff landscape does have an infrastructure impact to our supply chains. And our ability to get replacement parts and our ability to get folks to service our infrastructure is largely dependent on business partners. We don't manufacture HVAC parts in-house yet, although 3D printing, you never know. But it does put us in a difficult position. So we are absolutely understanding of the concern. We agree with the concern. We're working as fast as we can, and we know that some of our campuses are completely untenable. And we have prioritized them. And unfortunately, I feel like we're going to be fighting this for quite some time.
Ms. Yang, the Fiscal Management Committee is getting up the HVAC backlog on June 26. Thank you to Ms. Stewart for requesting that.
Okay, June 26. All right, everyone should mark their calendar.
Also, last thing I want to say is thank you to Ms. Bridget for coming last night to the First Communications Advisory Committee. We had a perfect turnout of incredible individuals in our county. I'm just always in awe about how, what a great group of parents that they have these incredible jobs. I mean, they're like scientists, research, they're art. I mean, and they all make time to contribute to school. But I do like to say, I do echo her concern about the plain language when we do put out anything for our kids because we cannot just assume that everybody has legal knowledge with some things. So the more plain and to the point that we can be at explaining, especially rules, especially to the young kids, it should be at a different level to middle schoolers, should be at a level that they understand. And then high schoolers should be the same. I think it benefits all. And for those parents, you know, who are not used to, right, getting a lot of this stuff or just having those words, they don't understand what they mean. I think we need to do a really good job about explaining exactly what our expectations are. So thank you for your recommendations and for being involved, and all of you who came to testify.
Ms. Wolf.
Okay, I want to thank Charlie first. You gave us a very simple solution to solve a problem. So thank you. But I also wanted to speak to Jamie and Laura. I think that we evaluate all programs, and all we're attempting to do in this resolution is to look at the CEO program. I think people are confusing this with SRO. This is not our effort to bring back SRO. This is our effort to find out if changes are needed to that program in hopes of helping it be successful. I also think that we gave some guiding questions to start. That didn't limit the questions that could be discussed during it. So just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Ms. Matoya.
Thank you. It's good to see you again, Charlie. I had the honor of visiting with Charlie at Loiderman Middle School and seeing all of this firsthand in the lunchroom and talking to students about this issue. So I just want to echo the thoughts of my colleagues and also thank everyone for being here today. And I just want to take a moment to also publicly congratulate our 115 MCPS students who graduated from the State's Attorney's Office Truancy Prevention Program last night and their families. So congratulations to all of you. We're very proud of you.
Ms. Stewart.
A lot's already been said, so I'll make this quick. Big fan of labels on food, so thank you for that suggestion. My son was highly allergic to sesame and, in fact, had an exposure the minute he left for grad school. So labels could help kids avoid emergency rooms. Then the HVAC issue. I just want to mention that I did get an email about the Loiderman issue. And really, the parts, getting parts, is not always easy. And so the more proactive we can be, the better. So then we're not having to always be waiting for parts. We can move maybe a little quicker. And I know we're working on that, on being more proactive. And then the Richard Montgomery IB program. My son graduated from that program. It was amazing. I would love to have that level of amazing RM program, that IB program, done with fidelity in other schools. So that's my goal, is to see the IB program be accessible to more kids throughout the county. And then the code of conduct issue. We are committed to restorative practices, and I think you will see that as we move on. But we should continue the conversation to, we can always do better. So thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. This concludes public com-
Ms. Msing. Oh, excuse me.
Sorry. Let me go back to this way. Ms. Silvestri, go ahead.
Yes, just wanted to say that, to the comments about media literacy and financial literacy, I believe media literacy is covered in our health curriculum. If anyone wants to correct me, please do. And I agree with you 100% about the importance of financial literacy for our young people. And throughout the years, the Board has expanded the options that high schoolers have in order to get financial literacy. They can get financial literacy through a fourth-year math course. They can take the elective. It's now offered in every classroom. On June 24th, Ms. Yang introduced a resolution last year to make online modules even in multiple languages. So while we don't have it as a graduation requirement, I feel like we have done a lot of work to expand this in our system because it is so important. And I think on June 24th, we'll hear an update on where we stand in terms of participation for our high schoolers. But thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, everyone. This now concludes. Oh, we will never conclude this public comment. I see how this is going. Last question, Ms. Matoya.
Just a further clarification from Ms. Silvestri. At the elementary level, I know my two elementary school students take media as one of their specials every week. And that's actually the type of thing they talk about. What are valid sources? They do projects and various things. So even at that young of age, we're trying to teach kids to, how do we decide what information is legitimate or valid or true and things like that? So rest assured. And I know she mentioned some of the financial literacy options. Recently, we haven't even had a chance to talk about it, but someone from Truist Bank indicated that they have some financial literacy-type things that they may be able to help partner with MCPS with. So I'll be having a conversation with Dr. Taylor about that hopefully soon, and we can see how we can integrate them. That would be great. They're a large bank, and it would be wonderful to have them as a partner.
Thank you, everyone. This time's for real. The Board's next business meeting is Thursday, May 22. Online sign-up for public comment will open on Thursday, May 15 at 6:00 p.m. In addition to online sign-ups, same-day in-person sign-ups are permitted when space allows, with unallocated slots filled on a first-come, first-served basis. In-person sign-up will close 15 minutes before the start of the open session or when all slots are filled. Now, additional information regarding upcoming meetings can be found on the Board website. We are going to move into consent items. We have a lot of items this month, 21 altogether. Board members, are there any items that you wish to pull?
Ms. Stewart. Thank you. I would like to pull 5.8 and 5.1, I believe. No, not 5.1. I'm sorry. 5.10.
5.8 and 5.10. Any other items? All right. May I have a motion to move the rest in block?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. Okay, 5.8. What's your question, Ms. Stewart?
Yes, this is a contract approval for masonry, waterproofing, retaining walls, and similar repairs and replacement at various facilities. There was a list of facilities, but I did not see one that I had a chance to visit, which is New Hampshire Estates, who seem to have a lot of waterproofing issues. So, I would just like to follow up on, to see why they weren't on the list and what's the plan for that.
So, yeah, thank you for that question. So, the New Hampshire Estates, we're looking at the overall, overall school. We do have an engineering consultant out there looking at the HVAC system. We're gonna try to kind of look at each problem individually and in solving the problems. And so, we're waiting for the engineer to give us an assessment and a design for the HVAC system and see if we will have to, you know, kind of monitor that and see if that gonna be the solution for it or not. We have not had any infiltration recently. We'll continue to monitor that. We did have moisture issues in the building, but that's related to a lot of the HVAC troubles that we have because there are air circulation problem in that building. So, that's why we're targeting the HVAC system, the design, and we'll look at that solution first.
That's interesting that you said that there's been no infiltration recently because I thought there was a particular wall that after large rain events, water would actually come in under the wall. So, that's just something to maybe add to the list of things to look at and to make sure we're not leaving any stone unturned.
Absolutely. We can look into that. Thank you.
Ms. Matoya, you have question on this item?
I do. I didn't initially, but I actually toured the school, and that was something that came up. So, I just want to just double check with the principal. Let's just make sure because there is a lot of challenges there, and we don't want to overlook something major, especially when we're in the course of approving the contracts. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Ms. Rivera, over.
Quick, quick question. And no pun intended, but Waters Landing has had a lot of issues. And we have talked about it. You guys have been very diligent about going and so on. But I don't think I saw them on the, on the list. And it seems that the issues in that school, they travel. They start in the front of the school. They gets fixed, and it moves down to the hallway. They gets fixed, and then it moves down to the library. It gets fixed. It just kind of goes, and it's thin. And it gets very disruptive, especially in the classroom, especially when they have to like close partially the library. So, I just want to make sure. I don't know what is the prioritization. I don't know how you guys prioritize. Again, if we, it's like HVAC, you have repeat offenders, and you put them on a list of, you know, or what kind of leaking has to be. I'm not a water engineer, so I don't know. But I just know that it can get very disruptive for, for the staff and the kiddos.
Okay. Well, yeah, thank you. So, I made note. We will follow up both on New Hampshire Estates and Waters Landing and find out, and we'll report back.
All right. 5.10. Please ask your question.
Yes. So, this is a contract for roof, a new roof at Wingate Elementary School. And I get questions sometimes from the community as to how the, the plan life Pilar, I forget what the A stands for, but replacement? Asset. Yes, plan life asset replacement. List is, there, well, it even says in this note that there is a list. And then, the list is evaluated when issues come up. But we have a lot of roofing issues recently that I've heard about. And so, I just thought maybe, could you quickly explain how that list works, if that is accessible to the public? And then, maybe we could follow up later on a more complete discussion about that.
Yes, sure. Yeah, happy to have a follow-up discussion. So, the, the roofing is a separate bucket than the, the Pilar. We have a separate capital funding that comes in for the roofing, and then we have, we have life safety. We have restrooms. Those are separate buckets. And then you have the, the Pilar bucket. For the roofing projects, it's a combination of age, number of work orders, and then we also look at the overall, you know, the KFI data that we currently have. Obviously, we're in the process of updating those. But it's a combination of looking at the age. So, obviously, every roof has a, has its, you know, lifecycle. It's somewhere between 25 and 30 years, depending on, you know, which system was used. So, there is a replacement timeline. We look at that, but we also look at the work orders and make sure we're working, you know, our capital team is working together with maintenance to find out, you know, the number of work orders, the number of troubles that we have been having. And that's how the, the list gets prioritized. But, you know, happy to have a follow-up discussion and details about any of the Pilar projects.
That, the Pilar and then those other projects, maybe we could, you know, just talk about those lists. Because again, I do get questions, why this school, not that school? And I don't necessarily always have a great answer. So, I actually need to learn. And so, I would love to have that session. Thank you.
Definitely. Thank you.
Thank you. So, can I have, if no further question, can I have a motion to move 5.8 and 5.10?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. We're going to move on to item number 6.1. Oh, what we are waiting for is the middle school English Language Arts Curriculum Approval. I'm gonna invite the staff to come forward and introduce yourself before we start the presentation. I know this is, Dr. Taylor, this, over the years, we have heard a lot of public comments on our English Language Arts Curriculum. Last year, we adopted Elementary School One, and this year is a full year of implementation. So, we are very excited about the Middle School One.
Yes, and we have some middle school teachers who are eagerly anticipating this formal adoption and then, of course, the game plan to talk about professional learning. So, in today's presentation, we'll bring forward our recommendation for a new middle school English Language Arts Curriculum to be implemented this upcoming fall. We have reached the end of our agreement with our current curriculum provider, McGraw-Hill Study Sync ELA. The team has engaged in a rigorous review of available open source curricula and a comprehensive evaluation process to arrive at the recommendation that we're bringing forward today. This recommendation is informed by research around the characteristics of effective ELA curriculum, the expectations of the state of Maryland for high-quality instructional materials, and I'm glad to say that it covers both of those, and the input from a wide variety of district stakeholders. And I'm thrilled to share that this covers that as well. So, I would like to just take, just a moment briefly to thank the folks that participated in our curriculum review. It is essential for us to adopt a great curriculum that we involve a lot of stakeholders, both students, parents, teachers, administrators. And we had a great group that invested heavily in this, and their endorsement is the one that we're bringing forward. So, we're very excited about that. And now, I'm thrilled to introduce our chief academic officer, Nikki Hazel, who's gonna start today's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Good afternoon, President Yang and members of the board. And I have with me here our secondary ELA supervisor, Jackie Lightsey, who will do the bulk of the presentation. But I do want to start just by saying that we are really excited to recommend the open source version of Core Knowledge Language Arts for grade six through eight. And if you can go to the next slide, please. So, we are really excited about this curriculum choice because we feel that it does honor the commitment to student achievement and improving quality of teaching through having high-quality resources for our staff. We also want to share that we were very committed to having a very open and transparent process as we selected the curriculum. If you can go to the next slide, please. Just a little bit of background for you. One, one screen here that's got the background. Prior to 2018, some of you may know that in MCPS, we wrote all of our curriculum, and we had an audit done by Johns Hopkins University at that time to audit our ELA and math curriculum. And their recommendation was that we shift to external curricula that had a strong focus on grade level standards. And so, that is what we did. And so, in 2018, we purchased the Study Sync curriculum and began a two-phase implementation. Unfortunately, pandemic hit us, right, as we were beginning that implementation. And so, there were some challenges getting started with, in terms of the fidelity of implementation. Over the last few years, we've been working with our teachers and staff with the implementation. And in 2023, 24, the office of shared accountability conducted an evaluation. We know that there are some concerns that we have, obviously around academic achievement of our students, but also the feedback from our staff really was that there was a lot of adjustments that they needed to make for the students to be able to access the curriculum. That became very challenging for our staff. And so, only 15% of the staff who completed the survey indicated that they would prefer to keep the curriculum. The majority would, would prefer for us to move to a different resource. And so, we are here now. It's kind of perfect timing for us to move to, since our contract has ended, for us to move to a different agreement. And so, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Jackie Lightsey, who will share with you why we selected this curriculum and our timeline.
Good afternoon. So, to further answer the question of why a new curriculum now, we want to just highlight a few additional factors. If you could, please go to the next slide. Thank you. So, beyond our expiring contract with McGraw-Hill, as Ms. Hazel alluded to, we have seen student performance data that really suggests we need to take a fresh approach to supporting literacy for our middle schoolers. So, we carefully weighed the three paths that we had available to us. One was renewing with McGraw-Hill. Another was to find another commercial vendor to provide curriculum through the Request for Proposals process. And the third option was to explore open source options. So, we decided on the open source route because it really does offer something truly compelling. It's research-based, vetted materials that don't lock us into a contract with a high-cost product around a proprietary product as well. And so, while there will be an upfront investment in terms of professional learning and materials, open source curricula are very cost-effective in the long term while still being extremely high-quality. And so, it also offers us that long-term sustainability. We can adapt and improve the curriculum as needed. Next slide, please. So, we now like to share how we arrived at this specific recommendation. Starting last November, we cast a wide net in examining all of the open source curricula available and using ed reports as well as the Knowledge Matters Campaign to narrow our focus to four options. So, we then created a new evaluation framework, and it was aligned with the state's criteria, as Dr. Taylor alluded to, for High Quality Instructional Materials, or HQIM. So, then after briefing our principals in January, we invited broad participation from across our community. And then, February was our intensive review period. By March, we had collected and analyzed 211 detailed evaluations. So, we really aimed to take a systematic approach to ensure that our decision was based on evidence as well as diverse perspectives. Go to the next slide, please. So, the strength of our recommendation really lies in who helped to make it. We ultimately had 82 unique participants representing diverse perspectives across our community. So, these perspectives represented not just central services staff, but the classroom teachers who will implement the curriculum, administrators who will support that implementation, and caregivers whose children will experience it. The evaluation process was quite lengthy, quite detailed for our volunteer participants. So, as Dr. Taylor said, we were so grateful to them to giving their time and to have representation from across MCPS and from across so many different organizations that advocate for our diverse student populations. Looking at our demographic breakdown, we see good representation across various groups, though we always want to strive for even broader engagement in any similar processes moving forward. But what we appreciate the most is that the participants gave so much of their time and brought both their expertise as well as their diverse lived experiences to their evaluations of our curriculum. Next slide, please. The quality of any evaluation really does depend on asking the right questions. So, as mentioned earlier, our evaluation used a comprehensive rubric that was based on the state's rubric for high-quality instructional materials, plus some additional items that were aligned specifically to our own district priorities. The rubric asks our evaluators to consider how the curriculum builds knowledge with texts, vocabulary, and tasks, the text quality and complexity of the curriculum, instructional supports and usability, resources to support differentiation and scaffolding, assessments, as well as cultural responsiveness and representation in the curriculum. So, this rubric really allowed us to thoroughly evaluate each option against established criteria to make sure that we were selecting the one that would truly meet the needs of our students as well as our teachers. Next slide, please. While all four of the curriculum options were actually very strong options and were highly rated among our reviewers, Core Knowledge Language Arts, or CKLA, was emerged and was selected for a few really compelling reasons. First, CKLA is aligned to our state standards, and it's driven by a very strong research base. It takes a knowledge-building approach that research, research shows is essential for literacy development, including in the middle grades. The intentional resources for emergent multilingual learners and students needing additional support meant that equitable instruction is part of the design. It's not an afterthought. The seamless progression from our elementary curriculum, which is also CKLA, also creates that continuity for students as they follow, they follow that intentional sequence of skills and knowledge from elementary to middle. The diverse and rigorous texts that expose students to rich language, perspectives, and ideas. And then, lastly, the robust support that this curriculum provides for teachers implementing the materials. Next slide, please. We wanted to share some of the qualitative feedback that we received for CKLA. The feedback was overwhelmingly positive, and the quotes that you see here on the screen represent larger patterns that we saw in the comments that we collected. So, ELD teachers in particular noted the thorough supports for multilingual learners. Many of our participants noted the thoughtful selection of texts that represent diverse perspectives and genres. Several commented on the structure and organization of the curriculum, as well as the graphic organizers, explicit grammar instruction, and vocabulary development. And those pieces benefit all learners, but especially those developing English proficiency. Several also elevated the connection to our elementary curriculum. It was seen as a significant advantage to create that coherent literacy journey for our students. So, while Common Lit 360 was actually one of the other top-rated choices among the four that we reviewed, we really needed to ensure that we looked at the qualitative feedback, those written comments that we gathered from our participants. So, when we looked at comments that elevated concerns about CKLA, the majority of those comments centered on the navigation of the website, the format of the materials. There are a lot of PDFs, as opposed to the content of the curriculum. So, these really are logistical issues that can be addressed without having to change the curriculum's core strength and the fundamental design of the curriculum. In contrast, when we looked at the negative comments for Common Lit, the vast majority of those pointed to concerns with the instructional design. And one example of that is the lack of emphasis on novels or full-length texts. That came through a lot in the feedback. So, these instructional areas would require a significant redesign if we're going to address those issues. So, while both CKLA and Common Lit did rate highly from a numeric standpoint, when we looked at the qualitative feedback, CKLA did emerge as the strongest choice. Next slide, please. To share just a bit more about what sets CKLA apart, I want to share about its comprehensive approach to literacy. So, rather than isolated skills practice, the units are built around knowledge domains with vocabulary and writing tasks that connect meaningfully to the texts that students read. The curriculum also recognizes that vocabulary growth happens through repeated exposure in context, not just in memorizing word lists. Writing is also treated as a, an integrated daily exercise, not a separate subject, and it's scaffolded appropriately. And for students needing additional support with foundational skills, there are robust assessments available as well as teaching resources across all the middle school grades. So, we really found that every design element focused on ensuring that all students can access rigorous content regardless of their starting point. Next slide, please. So, success with any curriculum depends on thoughtful implementation. So, what you see here is that our plan will span multiple years to ensure that we're not just dropping and going with this curriculum. Our plan is to begin this spring with introductory professional learning for our central services team, who will be supporting schools. And then, the summer will bring more intensive professional learning for our teachers, content specialists, and administrators. And throughout the 2025, 26 school year, we're going to provide ongoing coaching through PLCs and classroom visits. As we move beyond that first year, we'll continue to support schools while we evaluate the effectiveness of our implementation so far and make refinements. So, this gradual, supportive approach really is designed to give everyone time to develop expertise with these new materials and experience success with that support that they need. Next slide, please. When it comes to costs, CKLA does represent significant savings compared to continuing with Study Sync or a similar vendor. So, we see an over $1.9 million difference in the first three years alone, with even greater differences in the years to come. So, that initial investment will include implementation support, professional learning, and purchases of the texts that we don't already currently have. A key advantage of open source curriculum is that we can actually print student readers and print teacher guides through our own MCPS printing services. So, this really is a case where the educationally sound choice is also the financially responsible one. And we want to note that part of what we're seeking approval for today is the ability to move forward with a vendor to support us in that professional learning that we'll have to provide to hundreds of teachers who need it this summer, as well as ongoing support during the first year of implementation. Next slide, please. So, in conclusion.
So, we can stop now for any questions or comments?
All right. Thank you for the presentation. I know this is a topic, a lot is at stake. If we look at, at the data, right, National Assessment of Education Program, NAEP data indicated that in United States, when student graduate from secondary schools, only 37% of them are reading at a proficient level. And our MCPS data is better, but we are barely over half of our students. So, a lot is at stake. Today's conversation is gonna be important because curriculum is a big part of the support that we can get our students there. I'm gonna turn to my board members for questions and comments. I would like this to be as tight as possible. One comment, one question, the first round. Okay? Ms. Stewart, go ahead.
Actually, I'm gonna let Rita go first.
Okay. Ms. Matoya, go ahead.
Where is the Latino community in this evaluation? And if you hear me sounding a little bit frustrated, it is because I am. Time and time again, we have advisory boards or committees or all of these things, and I feel like I could be asking the same question. There were 89 respondents. You have three Latino. You have a group of organizations represented here. I don't see anything with the word Latino. And before you tell And before you tell me that we're represented by the Black and Brown Coalition, with all due respect, that is not the same. It is not an issue that we don't want to be a part of it, and I say that because I'm a Latina parent and a Latina professional who works very hard, who works with a lot of people in the community, who care very much about curriculum, and schools, and boundaries, and all of those things. And time and time again, we are not invited to the table because we are either inviting the same people over and over again, or we think that they're, oh, well, the community doesn't want to be engaged. That is not true. We are here, and you need to find us. This is unacceptable. We have on our rubric here that two of the standards are affirming cultural identities and supporting multilingual learners. As those apply to Latino students, of which there are over one-third in our school system of 160,000 students, at least 50,000 are Latino. How do we know if the curriculum meets those needs for those Latino students who are emerging multilingual learners or their cultural identities when we're not asking? We have Latino principals, staff, teachers. I know because I see them, I know some of them, right? They are there.
Thank you, Ms. Montoya, for the question.
We can't know if we don't ask them, excuse me if you can let me finish my sentence, as I give the respect for all of you. We can't know if we don't ask them, right? And we can't, we shouldn't be allowing others to speak for particular communities. So I feel challenged, in spite of all of the things I like about the open source, and maybe we should define what open source is in a moment for the community, but, you know, I do find this to be wonderful. But then I feel hesitant, because how can I know that it's actually going to work for all of our community when we didn't ask all of the community?
Right, so I completely agree. I think that we would have really liked to see much more well-rounded representation. One of the challenges, and this is not to excuse it whatsoever, but, you know, we did send wide communication, reached out to our parent advocacy groups across different demographic groups, and we did have a lot of interest in participating, but what the data shows you on the slide is the outcome, all the completed evaluations. So we weren't able to, because it was an experience that people had to opt into, it was difficult to know at the end of the process whose feedback we were really going to get because there was a firm deadline when it would close. So I think in the future, what I would like to do in this kind of circumstance is to create, you know, a deadline, really look and assess to see if we have that representation, and extend and further reach out if we don't feel that we have that.
Why didn't we do that here, though? Once you realized, why didn't we say, okay, wait a minute, we think we have a problem here? Because a third of our school community is not represented here.
Yeah, we recognize that. We've discussed the fact that this is an area that we were seriously lacking in at the end, and so we know that this is something that has to be improved upon with all of our areas as we're looking for stakeholders. This is an area that we need to just continue to approve upon and use our other resources to get that feedback.
Ms. Wolf?
I have to say, I feel a little bit like Ms. Montoya. I mean, the numbers are a little bit better for the African-American respondents, but clearly we have the staff between our principals, our parents, our administrators to get more than 10 responses for African-American students. I feel like she does, that we have basically the white community responding about how the Black students are going to be able to handle this curriculum. So that's my point. And to say that we would like to see more representation is what we always say. I mean, it's gotten to be, quite frankly, an excuse because they are there. The only other thing I would ask is, you know, I'm still troubled by writing. Where is writing in this? We're not teaching our students to write very well. I mean, I could skew somewhat the elementary school students, the really younger ones, but I need to see more writing in our curriculum.
That was one of the components of CKLA that we really appreciated because we agree with you and have always tried to prioritize writing as much as possible in our previous approaches to curriculum. What we liked about this is the way that it's embedded. Often, what we have is there's a writing task that kind of is set apart from the curriculum, and that does require some explicit instruction, but the way that CKLA is designed, students are writing essentially every day, and there are instructional pathways for teachers to actually develop those skills with intentionality. StudySync did require writing on the part of students, but I think that the design of it made it feel a little bit more separate than the way that CKLA is designed. So it's more integrated into that daily experience, the lower-stakes, shorter-term writing experiences, and also those longer form.
I'm looking to my left-hand side, Ms. Rivera.
Thank you. So the CKLA curriculum is the one that we have in elementary school currently, correct? This is the curriculum we had a few weeks ago where teachers came to testify on the lack of books for special education, on the lack of books, nonexistent books for EML learners. Here you are today, asking me to support this curriculum for middle school, when I'm going to echo Ms. Montoya's, my colleague's, comments, and Ms. Wolf's comments, when we have such a lack? And I only add up to 81 participants, not 82. So maybe it's not even three Latino, maybe there's two, but whatever it is. One of my biggest frustrations for the last two years has been the acknowledgement of the system saying, yes, we could do better, we should do better, we will do better. But here we are again, today, in May of 2025, where I'm asking you again, why haven't you done better? Because we, you know, the representation of Latino students, and when you look at their test scores in reading and math, it is embarrassing and also very sad, because we get one chance at educating these students. So when I'm looking at, you know, the implementation of CKLA in elementary school, and now we're going to do the same implementation in middle school, and I'm looking at the fact that we didn't do very well in implementation for our special education kids and our EML students, which not all of them are Latino, by the way. My concern is that now I have to take your word on it, based on an evaluation of 81 participants who lacked representation of the students that we're supposed to be teaching. And in a system this big, with 211 schools, I cannot imagine that of 211 schools, we cannot have found at least 10 folks, you know? And I don't even know if they're teaching EML. I would like to know the breakdown of their expertise. What grades do they teach? Are they EML? Are they special education, right? What is the expertise of the folks who actually responded to this survey? So I am very, 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 very hesitant in supporting this based on the lack of participation. Because as Ms. Wolf said, right, this is something that we're going to be asked to buy in for the long term, and honestly, I am not feeling that I can do that today.
Ms. Sivastri?
Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate your process, largely talking us through the strengths and weaknesses, but could you talk about, a little bit further about the areas for improvement that you see in this curriculum, and how you will address that across the years of implementation?
Sure.
No curriculum is perfect, right?
No, absolutely not. We did, we were pretty pleased in terms of the range of diverse texts. That was one of the things that came through in the feedback, but I feel that we can always do better in that regard. And we also have so many amazing texts already in our schools that are not necessarily a part of CKLA. And so our approach would be to recommend that students still have the opportunity to read all of those texts. I will say again, that when you look at the texts within the curriculum, there is a very wide range in terms of time period, genres, backgrounds. However, we don't want to limit the voices that our students interact with. So part of our process would be to take a look at the pacing, and CKLA recommends that they overplan, they overprovide in terms of materials, so there is room to provide students with opportunities to have a little bit of choice. That's one of the pieces that did come through in the feedback as well, is that there really isn't any room for student choice in the way the curriculum is written. And that's something we know our teachers value, our community values, and our students value, and we know it's key to engagement. And so we want to build a pacing guide that allows for those opportunities for literature circles and other forms of choice reading, so for both of those reasons, for the importance of choice, but also for the range of perspectives. That was one piece that we noted. And then the other piece I highlighted a little bit was just the usability for teachers. So a lot of the comments we had were that, you know, they don't have the ability to adapt the materials, they're in PDF format, and so one of our other steps would be to take those and reformat them, it's not overly difficult, and to make them easily accessible for teachers in our Canvas platform.
They are not in what format, you said?
They're in PDF currently, so they're not really adaptable. Teachers can't edit them or put them out to students using our current Canvas platform. They're all kind of in one long document, and so we recognize that really limits usability for teachers. So part of our plan would be to simply reformat those for teachers so they can access them more easily.
Great, thank you. I have more questions, by the way.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Zimberman.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation and the work you brought forward. As someone that's taught CKLA admittedly for the littles, it is really similar, even as you bring it forward, like really for the kids' third grade, if we choose to go forward with this curriculum, third grade through eighth grade would follow a really similar format. And that, like any decision, has its affordances and challenges. So in your evaluation that you brought forward with, you know, educators, support staff, and admin, like Ms. Rivera Ovan, I can't see, you know, who's represented in there among our staff, specifically our ELD teachers and our special educators. I really would want to see their thoughts specifically, because we hear very often from the elementary community that's implementing this, the challenges there. I also want to talk about your budget projection. So we did not purchase materials for our special educators or our ELD teachers when we implemented CKLA before. Is that in your projected budget? Because if they don't have the materials, they can't teach, and we can't continue to not serve our students that way.
Yes, certainly, we want to make sure this time that we have all of our special education, not only our students, but all of our teachers, whether they are teacher of record or teachers who are supporting our special education and English learners, to be able to have all of the resources and training they need to be able to instruct the students.
Perfect. Similarly related with materials and getting all of that, a criticism we hear often is that students aren't reading enough novels. Are there novels in this section of the curriculum? I can tell you they're not in three to five, so are they in six through eight? Is that still a criticism we're going to hear? Tell us more.
Yes, they absolutely are. That's one of the reasons that we chose CKLA. I mentioned earlier that we did have a pattern in the feedback around, that was something people were looking for. And so they noted that in some of the options, the novels were kind of downplayed, so there might be only one per grade level that students would read. And so the comments really indicated that that wasn't acceptable. And so in CKLA, there are five units, excuse me, eight units available per grade level, and depending on the grade level, it's usually five that focus on a novel, play, or a full-length informational nonfiction text. So they definitely are present, and they are the focal point of instruction. So even if you look at the titles of the units, we're not talking about themes, the titles of the units are the text that students are reading, and then there is that knowledge base around it that's built through the study of the text.
Great. Like others, I have more questions, but I know Ms. Yang was, let me know, my turn is over for now.
All right, Ms. Silvana.
Yes, I just want to echo some of the thoughts of my colleagues, especially regarding, you know, the representation that we're talking about. I'm not going to kind of rehash it because it's kind of already been said. One thing that I kind of want to see, and it's something that, you know, as I try to, you know, get more information about some of these topics, and the lack of literacy and reading and in math, sort of literacy just across the board, across school systems, across the country, one thing that I was reading about was when we separate into demographics, sometimes what we're really missing is the actual income brackets that we're missing, right? So is it just our, you know, are the ones who can afford, you know, the tutors at home, right? Who, the families who can afford tutors at home, who are really seeing the benefits, right, of a school system, and we're attributing that to different parts of our curriculum? Or are we really, you know, serving our students with the curriculum in house? So nothing to say with regards to the specific curriculum, but maybe something to think about in the future as we're looking at evaluation metrics, is to maybe see if we can break that down in terms of what is the income scale and the associated wealth as we look at some of those breakdowns.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I'm going to go back to the diversity question. So I did some math, and 73% of the respondents were white, 12% black or African-American, 7.4% Asian, and 3.7% Hispanic-Latino. And so obviously, that's not very representative of our community. So I guess I would have liked that disclosure from the outset, saying that this is our respondents, and we didn't get the diversity that we actually wanted to get, because I think we're all in agreement with that. And so, yes, we had geographic diversity, but we did not have ethnic or racial diversity. Okay, so now that that's out of the way, this is a consistent problem, especially with our Hispanic and Latino community. So we need strategies to build that pipeline, and that means continued engagement, not just when we need their input on a curriculum, right? So that means that we have a pool that we can pull from, and we can build that pool over the year. And so I don't know who would actually be in charge of building that pool, but I think that's something that we can do. I know we can do it, and at least we can probably make this about, I would say, five times better. I think that's a reasonable goal.
So Dr. Taylor, in the first round, I think one question really has stuck out. Would you like to answer about the engagement piece?
Well, I think that the board has already figured out one of our critical weaknesses as a school system, and also endorsed one of its solutions, which is to reengage our family and community engagement arm, which has been dormant, and absolutely critical that we do it in a really meaningful way. I really like the suggestion that came from the table and our curriculum team, which is to do spot checks when we're collecting feedback and then respond. It's a huge miss for us in this curriculum adoption process, and under a pretty tight timeline to get it all done, but it's really no excuse for us not to have the representative feedback that we're looking for. I like the suggestion, I like the proposed solution, it just needs to happen. As David Stein mentioned in his remarks, we just got to get it done, because we just got to get it done. And it really is the reality, because it's going to be reflective. I'm not sure it would change the recommendation, but on the off-chance that it would, that really needs to be known to the board. The board is counting on the public's feedback and from our stakeholder engagement to make informed decisions, so it's absolutely critical that we have that. The pipeline that Ms. Stewart is talking about needs to be developed, and the folks that can do that really need to be our family and community engagement arm, but even that can't happen in isolation. It really needs to be our team working well with one another internally. When I think back on comments that I heard this fall engaging with the community as your new superintendent, this was often a criticism of MCPS twofold. One, that we weren't really engaging in a really direct and meaningful way with intentionality for specific communities. And the second one, which is the right hand not really knowing what the left hand is doing, and... And this is really an opportunity for us in this new fiscal year to get it right.
Thank you. Now, for the first round, I have a question, and I think you probably very well aware this issue. So at the beginning of this school year, there's an email sitting in my inbox. It says, "I couldn't believe when I heard that all middle schoolers are put into advanced English classes at the da-da-da-da-da school open house last week. If everyone is in the advanced classes, it's not advanced, it really doesn't, does nobody any good. Higher achievers will get bored, and lower achievers will struggle to keep up." I think this is, it has been a question we have heard a lot more. So if you adopt this curriculum, CKLA, how is it differentiated for our students? Is it by different classes? Or is it just in one classroom, you're trying to do differentiated groups?
So as the email that you just shared mentioned, many of our middle schools do have most students in the advanced English course. The curriculum is grade-level-aligned curriculum, right? So it's designed to work for the grade level and to be differentiated as needed to meet students' needs, whether that's greater challenge, additional supports, and scaffolds. And so as part of the evaluation process, that was one thing that we specifically called out. That was actually an additional item that we put into the evaluation that was MCPS-specific and didn't come from the state, which was to make sure that students who are performing beyond grade level have ample opportunities to have challenge, and then that there also are ample supports. And so the way that CKLA is designed is that for every lesson, there are built-in support recommendations in terms of how to adjust the lesson and built-in challenge recommendations. And so it's designed to be used in a differentiated classroom, in a heterogeneous classroom. It can also be used, you know, regardless of what the format is at the particular school. But really, the goal was to find a curriculum that provided thorough guidance in terms of how to make sure that the curriculum is meeting the individual student needs. And we found that this curriculum did a good job of that. While we can say that, we also know that part of our plan would be to continue to collaborate with our partners in Delmi of Quinn, Department of English Learners and Multilingual Education, in our Office of Special Education, and our Accelerated and Enriched Instruction Team to make sure that we are also providing the professional learning and guidance to teachers so that they are equipped to differentiate instruction. In addition to that, we're also, we've been starting conversations with our middle schools around how they can build structures to make that differentiation more effective and doable for teachers, because we know that it is challenging. We also know that the research supports that that's an effective model.
You can probably tell from my body language, I was paying such close attention. So to unpack what you said is, it's going to be same level everywhere. And the pain point is how you train the teachers to feed the, to meet the needs of everybody in this classroom with what we are moving forward to do, that you propose we do. Okay. All right, we're going to go for the second round of questions. I'm going to start from this side. Mr. Silvana, please go ahead.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to expand off that question a little bit and kind of go into, you know, my initial reaction to that is that it's a really big equity issue to have all of the students in the same classroom and then have the teacher differentiate learning. Because what does that mean in terms of, you know, if we have a student, you might not think, right? You know, I don't think really the student is ready for this part of the curriculum. We're not going to let them, you know, let's have them do some more of the on-pace learning. And then I also have really big concerns over how, like, then is the grading scale subjective? And I don't really understand it, and again, I'll defer to the experts on this, right? But I really, I really do have some serious concerns in that area in terms of how it would be taught. As a student who has been in these classrooms, who has been, you know, in on-level classrooms and above-level classrooms, like, I can tell you that it is very difficult when there, when a teacher is trying to teach to a wise set of students on one class. I mean, I've had classes where this is not really the same, but where it might be like a Spanish four and a Spanish five class in the same room. And even that is just, again, not English Language Arts, but still a very, very difficult experience to try and learn in. And so I just really want us to take a second look to really evaluate that, look at what are some of the equity concerns that could be arisen out of it? And can we do some serious, just like checking in to see how is it really ending up affecting the students in our classrooms? Because if we have students who could be pushed, right? I mean, I think Ms. Yang always likes to use the reference of a moving goalpost, right? Trying to push students a little bit further, something I definitely agree with. But how are we actually, you know, getting students to say, you know what, we're going to push you up into this class, if you need to, we can drop you down. But we're not just going to say, you know, this is your ability, and we're going to try and cater to it in the middle of a heterogeneous class, so.
Mrs. Zimberman.
I do want to say, if I may, our goal and expectation is that all of our students are being taught with grade-level curriculum and grade-level standards. We know that not every student is reading that grade level, that we know, the data tells us that. But through studying our data, through planning, it is our responsibility as educators to figure out how our students are going to access the standards and the skills that they need for literacy. It may mean reading a different text than their peer, but it is our goal through planning to figure out how students are going to access those learning skills. And so we do want to make sure that we're not saying for our students that we're going to give some students a lower-level curriculum. That's not what we want to do. But it is our responsibility through training and through planning and through coaching to make sure that we can get our students to access that content. And so that is our goal, to do so as we, so whatever curriculum we select, we want to make sure it is at grade level for our students.
Okay, just very quick, I think what I was referring to was kind of the opposite, right? So how are we pushing, you know, some of our students to go above and beyond grade level?
Maybe I misunderstood you, I apologize.
Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Zimberman.
Okay, thank you. So related to that, are there other districts, especially with respect to size and diversity, that are using CKLA? I mean, really, we're looking at like pre-K to eight. Are there other districts doing the same thing that are similar to ours?
There are other districts that are implementing CKLA pre-K to eight. The Core Knowledge Foundation on its website has a kind of a directory of school systems that are implementing the curriculum. So part of the review process internally was taking a look at that and, you know, trying to, you know, ascertain how it's going and, you know, the impact. We actually have in our, one of our other Maryland districts, Washington County is implementing CKLA at the middle school level. So I coordinated with them, with the curriculum team over there and asked for their feedback. I had the opportunity actually last year to visit classrooms that we're implementing. And so they're finding that it's been really impactful for their students, and they're receiving positive feedback. Washington County is a smaller district than ours, but they are, there are districts all over the country that are having success.
Okay, because part of what I wonder, if we are their, potentially their largest partner, as we are a very large county in the U.S., that, you know, we might have the opportunity to work with them more closely on making sure that their curriculum continues to align with our needs, particularly thinking about issues that we had at the elementary level with getting translated access to, you know, the parent connection, that that wasn't available. But if we are one of their largest partners for K through, pre-K to eight, how can we utilize that to continue to have them be good partners with us? And if that's something that they're willing to do, I think that might be something that the board would be more willing to consider if we're considering CKLA more seriously. I'd also like to ask about professional development. Are we, it seems like we're looking to implement CKLA in the fall, but our professional development window for required PD for the summer has already closed. So what's our realistic plan for PD for our educators then? Because now we can't require summer PD for them anymore.
So if I'm understanding the question correctly, so we knew, we would anticipate that we were going to have a new curriculum. So when the March memo went out to invite teachers to professional learning, we had the date set so that they could have the date, no matter what the curriculum was. So we've had those established, we do have teachers registered, sections are full. It just depends which curriculum we select, what that will look like.
Got it. So the other potential problem with that is that those fill up very quickly. I ran into an issue last year that I was teaching summer school, so then the session I was signed up for, I could no longer attend. And I was then told that there were no sessions that I would have to figure out the curriculum by myself. So what then, like, do we have enough sessions? Are, because then the other, that they're, they should be then offered again in the fall? We have plans for the fall as well?
Absolutely. So when I said sections are full, I meant to say, like, people have signed up, we have sections that are full. But not all the sections are full. We have, I think it's eight different dates, two sections on each date during different weeks of the summer, because we know that people have plans that tend to, you know, span a week sometimes, so we try to spread them out. And so far, we have, we have room available, and we can also be flexible in terms of the capacity if we need to. We have, you know, follow-up opportunities as well in the fall, but we're hoping that everybody has the chance to come in the summer, given the wide range of dates that we've offered.
Great.
Thank you, Mrs. Zimberman. Ms. Svestri.
Yes, I wanted to request, I'd like to see the curriculum, if I could be sent a couple samples, not a lot, just to give me a taste for what it looks like, what it feels like. And also, if you could, if I'm a teacher in middle school teaching this, let's say we adopt this today, can you help me understand what happens next for me as a user? And we talk a lot about grade-level standards and teaching to the standards. How do you help me as central office to teach to the standards? Who holds me accountable for teaching to the standards? How do you know that I, as a teacher in the classroom, am teaching to the grade-level standards?
So to go back to the first question, as a user, one of the first things that would happen, so what we've been trying to anticipate are all of the questions that we know teachers and leaders will have. So we've been trying to think through, what are the things that, as teachers start to look through this curriculum, they're going to, questions are going to emerge, they're going to want to know, you know, are we using all of these units? Where do I get the resources? When is my opportunity to talk with somebody about how to improve my implementation? So we've started developing responses and resources to help teachers at the very beginning to start to feel supported. And with the professional learning, of course, there will be an emphasis on how do you use the curriculum with integrity? And if you do that, that's how you know you're teaching to grade-level standards. And so there are components of a curriculum that we call the active ingredients or the non-negotiables, and those are the pieces that really are the research-driven components that make sure that what students are receiving is at grade level. And then there are areas where you might have a little bit more flexibility, like we talked about with giving students some choice. So that's a part of the professional learning. In terms of making sure that that's happening, we do definitely want to, and we're going to provide professional learning directly to our content specialists. We've asked administrators to come to professional learning as well. And so part of that is to provide them with tools to go into classrooms, observe instruction with us partnering with them as much as we possibly can across our big district, but going in, observing instruction, providing feedback to say, yes, you are implementing this curriculum with fidelity or integrity versus here are some ways that you've made adjustments for students that might actually unintentionally be changing the level of challenge, and so here's what we need to see in order to make sure that students are receiving that grade-level instruction. So it's definitely a partnership between us as central services and our school-based leaders to make sure that that implementation is happening.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes, and a partnership as well with the school support side and also our Delmi, our special education. So we are, or, you know, they have participated with us in the selection of the curriculum, but then also we'll be working together as we go out and support schools and ensuring that what we trained on is actually happening in schools. And where there may be schools or classrooms that are struggling to work side by side for some coaching support.
Right, thank you. So critical, important, because if it's not being implemented to fidelity, then it could be the greatest curriculum in the world, but it's not going to have the impact that we want for our students. Thank you.
Ms. Rivera Oven.
Can you give an idea of how many middle school students we have that this curriculum's going to affect?
It's about 33,000 or so. Sorry, what was that number? About 33,000, maybe a little more now.
Okay. So just for comparison's sake, since I was going to ask that question about what other jurisdictions are using this curriculum? Washington County in totality has 23,000 students for the whole county. And I was looking more for a comparison to a Fairfax County, to even in the state, to a Prince George's County, like, what did they use? Something that, you know, DC, something that's more comparable to the student population that we reflect, because honestly, comparing, you know, 33,000 kids to the totality of the whole county of 23, it's kind of comparing apples to oranges. So one of the things that I wanted to say is, last night we had our advisory communications meeting, that was such a diverse group of folks that were hoping that this is, you know, and I know we have other committees in MCPS, that these are great resources for, these are people already who are taking time out of their day to be able to be invested in our students. So maybe that's a group that you can target. But when you did the survey, how many people were you looking for to answer? I assume it was a survey? I don't know.
So we put out a request for participation. So that was something that we sent to all of the different community organizations within MCPS to make sure that we had that broad representation and asked people to indicate their interest in participating. And then the follow-up to that was all of those members were invited to an orientation conversation where we went through the options. And then the rubric itself was a survey format, so a Google form that took the pieces of the HQIM rubric and put it into a form.
So your target population was how many? Like, what were you, what were you expecting to get? Like, what was your magical number, I assume?
You know, honestly, I personally have never gone through this specific process in this way before with open source. It's a little different than the request for proposals process that we usually do. I was hoping for around 100, just based on what I've seen happen in other similar processes. So I, generally, the number to me was around what we were hoping to see. And it was a very detailed, long process for our participants who volunteered to do it. So we knew that it would be difficult to get, you know, many more than that.
I got you. Like, Ms. Svestri, can you share that, what Ms. Svestri was to ask with the rest, with the rest of the board? Because I think that would be important, see, I still have a lot of hesitation, so I really would like to see that in the implementation. And if somebody asks about the cost of how much this is going to, this is, how much is it going to take? And then when I looked at the data from Washington County, I don't know how long, do you know how long they have this program?
I think this is their second year.
Okay. Because their projections are in the low 40s for reading. So that is a little bit concerning to me, since we're going to be embarking in a whole new wave of, you know, trying to, is CKLA a new program? Like, is it a new thing? I don't know, I don't know. You know, like, is it a new, is it a new product in town? I don't, I don't know. I'm just trying, I'm not an educator, so I'm trying to understand.
No, the Core Knowledge Foundation is a longstanding organization. I can't recall the exact year, but I know that I looked at studies that went back to 2004 from the Core Knowledge Foundation. So in terms of the Amplify products, we are doing the open source version, which has been around for, I want to say until, since at least, I think, 2018, and there's a 2023 update that they have implemented. The elementary version, I believe, has been around longer.
And have you looked at the comparable counties, what they use, like Fairfax and other counties? And have we looked into those as well?
Most of our neighboring counties that I looked at are using a vendor-driven curriculum, so provided by McGraw-Hill, or there's Witten Wisdom, there's other ones that are purchased curricula that most of our neighboring districts use. A lot of our neighboring districts are also still using homegrown curriculum as they're transitioning to HQIM.
Thank you. I'm going to turn to Ms. Wolf.
Well, the one thing about being on this board is I'm on the board with a lot of like-minded people. So Pranil asked my first question. Natalie asked my second one. Grace tapped into my third one. And so I, I hope this is a different one, and I don't really think it is. I think it's a play on Pranil's. But you mentioned grade level design curriculum. Well, in talking, in my visits to the school, CKLA was not working well, as Grace said, for our EML kids. And the pacing is part of the problem. So I'm not sure how you handle grade level instruction for everybody that's not on the same grade level in reading. That's the first thing. And the second thing is, I'm a little bit concerned too that you're, you're looking at districts that are not demographically the same or even close to us in size. So my question is, is, are we expecting to move this along today or are we able to get more information?
Well, we serve at the direction of the board. So if the board doesn't have a level of comfort, then that gives us an indication. I will say that in general, us planning and moving forward, the more time that we have, the better. We are kind of running tight in terms of where we are from a, from a curriculum standpoint. I would say that if the board has reservation, I'd give us a very concrete direction as to what you want to see and then have us do a quick turnaround if you wanted us to, to pause.
Well, what my concern is that, you know, I've visited a lot of the elementary schools that had this and heard from a lot of them that it doesn't work for our EML kids. So I'm wondering, did you survey literacy teachers, you know, to get, I mean, in this 82 respondents, how many of them actually teach using CKLA?
So the evaluations that we gathered were from current middle school ELA teachers. So they wouldn't, unless, I guess none of them would have taught CKLA in elementary. But the majority of the people who provided evaluations were current ELA, ELD and special education teachers.
But they're not the ones that have been trying to implement it, to know about all of these problems.
Correct. I will say that it has been beneficial to communicate with our elementary colleagues and find out what some of those challenges have been so that we can try to be proactive about that. My counterpart in Department of English Learners and Multilingual Education, and I have been in close communication and collaboration around how can we make sure that we are centering our EML students and our ELD teachers to make sure that they have the resources they need to make this successful. And in the feedback, it was actually one of the highlights that the ELD teachers really did feel that the resources, and they're comparing to StudySync, which they had previously, they felt were much more robust for, for EMLs and CKLA.
You know, I'm, I'm not an educator, but it would seem to me that if you had a group of the elementary school literacy teachers talking to the middle school literacy teachers, you would get a much better understanding of the challenges. I know they're talking to you, but when you got a middle man, something might get lost in the exchange. So I'm just thinking, maybe we could have some cross, cross-level groups.
Thank you. I'm going to go two more. Ms. Matoya and Ms. Stewart.
Thank you. I'm having a hard time because of the, the, the process basically that was taken, right? In terms of the respondent data, it's challenging for me to raise my hand to things if I don't feel like I have the data I need to rely on, right? And so I guess my overarching concern is because if we adopt this, how will MCPS know if this is working for our Black and Latino students? So what process, what measures are you going to use? When are those, you know, observations or evaluations or whatever you're going to do is going to occur? Because we know generally that when we adopt new curriculums, it could be amazing. And we still have challenges and we're implementing it. It's new. There's change, right? There's little drop-offs here and there. And so there's a natural amount of that that occurs anyway. And how are we going to know whether it's just the natural drop or it's because, no, actually for two segments, which is most of our student population, it's not working. Because we see the way that things were not working historically, year after year, for our Black and Latino students. And I believe before I was even on the board, I heard Ms. Wolf ask, is it possible that this curriculum just doesn't work for Black students? And so here we are again, and that was at least a year ago, that I heard her say that on a board meeting I was watching. And so how are we going to know if we adopt this without this data that we're all asking for? How are we supposed to know that we're making the right choice, that there's a process in place to make sure this is working? And what are we going to do if we see that it's not? Are we going to leave it because maybe it's working for most of the other students and that's the majority of our respondents? I just, I need you to give me something here to tell me that I can trust what you're proposing.
One thing I'll share, do you want to go first? Okay. One thing I will share is that one of the other things that we really appreciated about CKLA was how many aligned assessments there are, formal and informal, to make sure that teachers have aligned resources to see how students are doing before we get to the MCAP, before we get to, you know, these much larger scale assessments. So that's, of course, a part of our implementation plan to make sure that teachers are using those assessments. And to the extent possible, you know, having that data shared with us so that we can see how students are doing. But one other piece that I want to share is that by adopting a curriculum like CKLA, we're shifting fundamentally the way we're approaching literacy instruction from middle school to a knowledge building approach, which we have not done before. And that's part of why CKLA was adopted at the elementary level. There is ample research supporting that shift to knowledge building, that it builds reading comprehension and student engagement by having that intentional sequence of content knowledge that builds over time. So it's the core knowledge sequence that students would be participating in. There is a lot of research showing that that's an effective approach. And so we do expect to see some significant, you know, growth in terms of our students by building that content knowledge and having that ability to access complex grade level texts through the design of the curriculum.
Okay. But how do you know it's going to work for Black and Latino students specifically? That's the question that I'm asking. What is the process that is going to be implemented after fall, the school year starts? How are we going to know that our Black and Latino middle school students, that this curriculum works for them?
Right. And I, I mean, I do think that the only way we know is through looking at regular ongoing data. So in addition to whatever assessments that we have taking place two, three times throughout the school year, we have these smaller informal assessment checks for our students. And I think that's what she's getting at, that we will make sure is built into our monitoring plan with our schools. And as we collaborate with our other offices and we're going in to support and do those checks, we'll be looking to see how those students who are not quite on level are doing and if they're making progress. So similar to elementary, where we're developing these literacy plans for students that are not on level, we'd be doing the same thing for our middle school students. So that's a part of all of that school improvement planning for schools. So that's, that is probably more important than these two or three assessments that we give middle and end of school year, is the ongoing informal checks.
Thank you. And that's what I wanted to hear, that we're going to have ongoing informal data checks, that we're going to have plans in place. I want to hear that we're notifying parents, that we're bringing people in. Oftentimes I hear, oh, well, they're older students or, no, all of our students need communication with their homes and their families so that they can support their students and provide that consistency that we all want our kids to have. Thank you.
Stewart, Ms. Stewart.
Okay. I want to revisit the structure again, the all one-level classes. So right now, for instance, when my child was in middle school, there were certain classes that had a co-teaching model because there were, they weren't, they were on level. And some of those kids on level were really not on level, which is why they were in that class. And so that really helped kid to be able to differentiate in that classroom. And so I'm not hearing if there's going to be any metrics that you're going to follow with the different levels in the classroom to put in the additional supports. Because that co-teaching model really, I mean, I saw how impactful it was to those students. Any thoughts?
So certainly, we have several different models for how we ensure our students are getting their grade level needs met. Co-teaching is one model that we use for students who may be English learners, students who have an IEP, or it just might be that there's a student maybe who doesn't even fall into either of those categories, but can benefit from additional support in the classroom. So co-teaching is certainly a model that can be used. And we are working, I know as we support our teacher leaders, that we are working on co-teaching as a strategy. But really, our, our bigger strategy is as we support schools with understanding what the standards mean, understanding what the data is telling us about what students need, and then understanding as we plan what they need and how they need to receive that instruction, whether it's a whole group, whether it's a smaller group, whether it's co-teaching. There are a variety of ways that we can address students' needs. And that's kind of the, the magic of, of, of planning and, and teaching that, that our, our teachers are delivering every day.
I guess what I'm, you can't have a co-teacher in every classroom.
That is true.
Right. And so if there's no leveling, I mean, this is just practical issues with that model that we should definitely think about going forward because it does give me a little bit of heartburn to think that where's the cutoff for the co-teaching? And then you have one classroom with lots of different levels that might not quite meet the need of the classroom next to them. It's, it, it sounds complicated to me, but again, I'm not the professional here. You are, so I appreciate that.
That is often what our, our school leaders are considering when they put, when they're putting classes together, are, are the needs of the students and then what staff they need to support them.
So I want to thank my colleagues for very thoughtful questions. I'm going to stop right here because even though I think today you came with the intention of seeking board approval, at this point, I think there remain a lot of questions to be answered. Also, I do, I am clearly aware of the time you would like to have summer professional development. So looking at my calendar, we have two more board meetings before the school year let out. I would really like you to go back, please collect, I think our staff can help you organize the notes from this session. And there are clearly a lot of questions asked, questions about engagement, questions about meeting the diverse needs here and here, how you're going to operationalize with this curriculum. Please go back and, and prepared. And we are open to add this to our agenda in either our May 22 or June 10 meetings. So I think that concludes this discussion. Let's move on to the next item.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. And we look forward to bringing that item back for action in the future. The, the next item is another big, robust topic for consideration. And I want to give a little context to this discussion because this is not really something that the board has spent a lot of time talking about, but it is something that the board hears an awful lot about. In the fall, through a series of listening sessions across the county, a key message was emphasized to me, and it was the critical importance of relationships. I share my belief that strong trusting relationships between students, staff and school leaders are our first and most powerful tool to limit dangerous behaviors and prevent safety incidents. We heard a great deal about this even today during our public comment. Investing in connection building at every level, in the classroom, schools and in our community is absolutely essential in creating the kind of safe, welcoming environments where all students can thrive. Our updates to the Student Code of Conduct being discussed today are more, are about more than just discipline and student conduct. They are about reinforcing our expectations within a culture of dignity and respect. And I want to reiterate two critical points here. First, that it's everybody's responsibility to provide a safe and welcoming learning environment for all children and that it's everyone's responsibility for student conduct. In previous years, there have been changes to the Code of Conduct without any conversation with the public and without any conversation publicly with the board. I am delighted that we get to have this conversation today because today's updates are a part of a broader intentional approach in raising our expectations, communicating those expectations, building stronger partnerships, not just between our students and our staff, but between our families and our staff, and reinforcing a culture of care and accountability. You're going to see a couple of things highlighted in today's presentation that I'd like to elevate. We say we do a lot with restorative justice. And on paper, we do. But we have not institutionalized that to the level that we have needed to in order for it to be effective. Having just one or two people in every building having some background into restorative practices is insufficient for us to have a restorative approach to problem solving. The second thing that I'd like to elevate is that any time that you go through any kind of significant change of any kind of magnitude, it's really important for us to have some kind of robust system for monitoring. I cannot tell you with confidence that our data systems and our monitoring of student conduct has been sufficient in the past. And this is really an opportunity for us looking forward to have more accurate systems to monitor our student conduct and to be watchful for things like disproportionate suspension rates or even interactions with law enforcement. So I want to thank all of the students, families and staff and community members who continue to partner with us in Montgomery County and who have shared their thoughts on student conduct with me, which have been numerous, and to try to make Montgomery County Public Schools a place where every student feels safe, connected and ready to learn. I will now turn things over to Dr. Peter Moran, our Chief of School Leadership, to begin the presentation and walk you through some of our ideas.
Thank you, Dr. Moran, for being here. I'm actually delighted for Dr. Taylor for your candid comments. This is the first time in recent years that we have a open discussion on student code of conduct. And also that, that for your transparency of all the work that remain for us to do. Go ahead, Dr. Moran.
Thank you, President Yang. Thank you, Dr. Taylor, members of the board. It is a pleasure to be here with you and have this, this, this conversation that, that has been one that we, we probably should have had in previous years, but, but here we are today. So I'm pleased to, to be here. If we could go to the next slide, please? So before we start, I just kind of wanted to just have a general conversation about what we, what we know about our, about kids, about our students. And, and the one thing that we do know is that we know that our kids, our students will make mistakes, right? We, we know that. That's part of, it's part of growing up. That's part of development. Dr. Taylor had us in cabinet reflect on Staff Appreciation Week. I took that to heart and really thought deep and hard about teachers that had an impact on me. And as I started to think about teachers and, and come up with their names, honestly, the teachers that I really remembered, it wasn't really always the content. It was the life lessons that I learned. And those life lessons mostly came after I'd made a mistake. And so I think those life lessons, you know, that our teachers are providing to our students every single day are just an acknowledgement of understanding, you know, that content is critical, but, but, but teaching students, you know, how to be good people and good, good citizens is equally as important. So. And we know that kids at times are going to engage in behaviors that, that are unsafe or inappropriate. And we have to have a standardized method of how we support students when they do make those types of mistakes. If we could go to the next slide, please? So what we also know about our students, and this is one that I really want to drill down on, we know that our kids thrive when there are clear expectation, expectations that are well-supported and really clearly communicated to our students. We deeply believe that our students are able to attain
We deeply believe that our students are able to attain any goal or expectation when they have a clear understanding of it, and they are provided a system of supports to attain it. We also know that, as we talk about consequences, there's also the need for incentives for positive behavior, right? We have, I think, seen an increase in embracing recognition this year. That recognition for students around academic success is critical, but that part of the recognition of student character is equally as important, and we need to have systems in place to do that. If we could go to the next slide, please? So the goals of our student conduct are very clear. They align with Dr. Taylor's, really, his entry plan, things that we've heard at the different listening sessions. And the first is maintaining student safety, not only for students but for staff, campus safety. And the second goal of our student conduct is really to teach and support self-control and behaviors that are appropriate for school, but also for future success in life. Next slide, please? So each year, as Dr. Taylor shared, the staff revisit the Student Code of Conduct to ensure it fulfills the board's philosophy of discipline set out in the Board's Discipline Policy, JGA, and the state requirements upon which the code is based. This process includes meeting with a team of administrators, teachers, and supporting services. I'm happy to share this year, we had at the, you know, request and collaboration with our union's representatives from transportation, the bus drivers bought a very important perspective as they, you know, really are that first classroom, that mobile classroom in the morning, that mobile classroom going home. So really, I just want to acknowledge them and appreciate their contributions to the collaboration that took place. So similar to our conversation about grading and reporting, and I want to draw that connection, right? We believe that students thrive when expectations for academics or character and conduct are raised. However, raised expectations also require the need to adjust supports to ensure students and staff have the tools they need to meet them. Today, we will talk about the correlation between the Student Code of Conduct and prioritizing the safety of schools, the need to ensure there is a strategic communication process regarding these changes, ensuring restorative approaches remain a key strategy, and the need to enhance the partnership with parents and caregivers to ensure consequences and supports are well communicated. Again, I just want to go back in Dr. Taylor's entry plan, we were reminded that before we can reach Bloom's taxonomy of learning, we must first address Maslow's hierarchy of needs. If we go to the next slide, please? The fundamental building block for success is to ensure our learning environments are places where students and staff have a sense of safety, belonging, and emotional well-being. Only when we have this in place will students be able to achieve at the highest levels. When students feel welcomed, included, and respected, they are less likely to engage in inappropriate behavior. When students have a trusted adult, they are much more likely to confide in the school. School environments rooted in care, equity, and trust help to prevent discipline issues. These updates to the Code of Conduct reflect that philosophy. Discipline and behavior are not separate from instruction, but foundational to ensuring students are ready and able to engage in learning. These environments where students and staff feel safe, supported, and connected are fundamental to both academic and social success. Next slide, please? We have clearly heard from you, the board, the community, our teachers, our administrators, and our students. With a collective voice, our community has stated that safety must be a priority for all. One of the major themes in the voice data from Dr. Taylor's entry survey was around conduct and safe learning environments. Specifically, we received feedback that action should be taken to manage problematic conduct through clear and consistent behavior management policies, increased support for students with behavior challenges, and a focus on positive school climate through restorative practices. Over the course of this school year, we conducted an array of community meetings and listening sessions with staff due to concerns about safety and security. The feedback from these meetings matched the district-wide survey. In response to the feedback for clear and consistent implementation, our Student Code of Conduct will reinforce our core values of safety, discipline, and learning from the decisions we make. It will increase student accountability, and it will elevate the use of restorative approaches. Again, restorative approaches is a key strategy in both building positive culture and as part of the continuum of disciplinary responses. Indeed, restorative approaches and a strong code of conduct are not mutually exclusive. Next slide, Pete, please? So let's step back and remember that the Student Code of Conduct is an implementation guide for responding to student violations of MCPS rules. And let's also recall that those rules are established in law, policy, and regulation. The Board's Discipline Policy and Maryland Law emphasize dignity, equity, and support. Maryland Law requires a progressive approach to discipline, maintaining the student in their regular academic program as much as possible. In today's presentation, you'll see a tiered continuum of behavioral responses aligned with the Maryland Law and the MSD Model of Code of Conduct. One thing that we learned or heard through this voice data was that the five-level behavior intervention matrix could be revised for clarity. You will see levels one and two show more clearly that this is what you and I just think of as good teaching. Reinforcing appropriate behavior, be in touch with parents and guardians, and if there is a concern that something serious could be going on with a child, find out. Level three and four are more clearly about what the principal can do to hold the student more accountable and stress the seriousness of misconduct to the parent and guardians, enlisting their help and stressing to the student and the family the steps needed to restore and repair harm done. I'll point this out as we go along, but one of our changes this year is specifically to level four and the tools principals have at that level. It should be noted that inappropriate use of technology to share, send, or post private information, including fights, has been elevated to level four. And the distribution of controlled substances begins at level four as well. Level five is reserved for those actions reserved in the Maryland Law for the superintendent's action. These include extended suspension and expulsion. Each of these has detailed criteria and procedural requirements in law and in our regulations, and any recommendation to use level five must be very serious. These changes are not happening in isolation. Just like with our grading and reporting updates, we are pushing for consistency, clarity, and fairness across all our schools. In both cases, the focus is on transparency, developmentally appropriate practices, and ensuring equity of experience for every student across the system. Student conduct, just like student learning, is everyone's responsibility, as Dr. Taylor said. Students, parents, teachers, principals, and support staff all play a vital role in creating a positive school culture. Support strategies for students are built into this new framework. Interventions, mentorship, check-ins, and behavior supports are no longer nice-to-haves but are required elements of our response system. Some behaviors are simply too serious to resolve without time, distance, and reflection. Our updated levels acknowledge that some situations require a student to step away from the learning environment in order to process, reflect, and return ready to restore and learn. Next slide, please? On this slide are some examples of specific, serious infractions where the levels of consequence have been elevated. These levels remain within the guidelines from COMAR. A common question that's asked is, does a principal have to use the lowest level of intervention first? The answer is no. But the lowest level should be considered based on mitigating circumstances such as age or developmental appropriateness. For example, MCPS does not make it a practice to expel elementary school students from school. Conversely, principals may choose to utilize a higher level of consequence on the continuum for aggravating factors such as prior infractions, previous school intervention, harm caused to others, or disruption to the learning environment. This just makes sense, right? And well, we'll make sure that these terms and these criteria are more clearly communicated and consistently applied, because this is what makes a progressive disciplinary approach transparent, age-appropriate, and provides discretion where discretion is needed to take into consideration mitigating and aggravating circumstances. I want to take the opportunity to point out several of the examples on this slide to just share where we were and where we're going. You'll notice that under theft, bomb threats, bullying, harassment, attack on a student, attack on a staff member, started at level one. What that communicates just on paper, without any training at all, is that it's appropriate for a teacher to intervene, just as I explained on the previous slide, with strategies when there's a bomb threat. It's not appropriate for a teacher, nor do they have the training to handle a situation like that. As you can see for bomb threats, it's moved from the span of level one through five, which leads to a great deal of variance, to a level four or a level five, meaning suspension or suspension for 10 days with recommended expulsion. You'll look at attack on staff. Previously, attack on staff was a level one through five, meaning that you're communicating to a teacher, a supporting service member, a bus driver, that if they were to be attacked by a student, it would be appropriate for them to respond themselves. That's not the way that our system should run, and demonstrates extremely low expectations for the character that we want to see out of our students. We've elevated that to four to five, and we've elevated that to three to four at the elementary school level. I want to acknowledge even the testimony that President Howe gave from MCCPTA. We have differentiated things from elementary to secondary. That was a lot of the feedback that we got, and we are looking at ways for, you know, kid-friendly language to ensure that it's appropriate and students have an understanding of the changes that we've made. Again, I want to point out also theft of $500 or more was also a span of one to five. We've elevated that from three to five, meaning that level three is an in-school suspension or in-school intervention, four being a suspension, or five being a 10-day suspension with recommended expulsion. So as you can see, we had a wide range of variants around these. This tool is really a communication tool, and by making these changes, we're more clearly communicating the expectations and also ensuring that our administrators, and this is key, and I want to point this out, when it's level one and level two, if that decision's being made, it also means that we may not get an administrator involved, because they would become involved at level three. So if I don't have it to level three to level five, it may not be reported to me as a principal or an assistant principal. And that means it also might not be communicated home effectively, too. So I just want to point that out as well. If we could go to the next slide, please? All right, so as we've repeatedly said, student conduct is everyone's responsibility. When expectations aren't met, we must respond as a team, bringing together staff, families, and students to ensure the behavior is addressed and learning continues. We must explain the why behind our approaches. The supports outlined in the revised code, behavior intervention plans, check-ins, restorative circles, mentoring, and counseling are not optional. These are now expected components of a school's disciplinary response. This represents a significant shift for some schools, and we are committed to supporting their implementation. I want to point out the significance of a mandatory reentry plan and intake meeting. Again, we talk about nice-to-haves, and then we talk about standardization across the school system of 211 schools. We are requiring now that all students and parents have an intake meeting, a reentry plan. One of the things we've learned through research, as we've, you know, had discussions about this, is one of the things that the Secret Service says is that by having actually a reentry plan with students, it diminishes or decreases a repetitive behavior associated with what occurred. It also is an opportunity for us to provide services during that meeting. The social worker could be involved, counselor could be involved, access to external resources and partnerships could be a component to that. But it's important to bring the family in together to ensure that they have an understanding of the rationale for the decision that was made around the consequences. And I want to, I want to separate out the two things for people, because I think they're often blended together, right? The restorative approach is not a consequence, right? The restorative approach is part of the continuum, but the consequences within the code of conduct, right, are the consequences. You use restorative approaches as a proactive or preventative measure to create a school culture, or on the back end, to restore a situation that may have happened between two students, a student and a teacher. All right, so I just want to distinguish between those. I also wanted to point out, because it's been a question from the board, our interest in involving conflict resolution and peer mediation as a key component, and getting support from some outside agencies around that. And also, just, I wanted to highlight the importance, we continually hear from our students that the trusted adult piece is a huge deterrent in repetitive student behaviors in a positive school culture. So I just wanted to highlight that as well, and ensuring that they receive that support during that one-week window. If we could go to the next slide, please? So our next steps for these changes. So first of all, restorative approaches is not just a practice, it's a mindset. Our updates move it from a strategy to a central component of our disciplinary approach. In the operating budget, you will see the new Office of Student Conduct and Appeals. This addition will support our system accountability by ensuring school-based actions are reviewed with fidelity to policy and legal guidelines. When applied with fidelity, restorative practices rebuild trust, promote accountability, and repair harm in a way that punitive measures often cannot. We are investing in ongoing professional development to ensure staff are equipped to lead restorative conversations and help students take meaningful ownership of their actions. I want to just double down on something that Dr. Taylor said. We, and it kind of goes back to teaching someone to fish. In order to create a culture where restorative approaches are not a central service that is brought into a school, you have to provide professional learning to schools, and not only provide professional learning that's standardized across the system, but assess where people are in a continuum. At Argyle, they're very advanced with restorative approaches. You wouldn't do the same thing at Argyle that you might do at another middle school. So in ensuring that we, you know, have a professional learning specialist that specializes in restorative approaches on each of our cross-functional teams that can deliver differentiated support to get us all to just a common set of excellence around restorative approaches. The other part I want to highlight is all school-based staff will receive training on the updated Student Code of Conduct, including restorative practices and tiered behavior responses as part of their required annual compliance modules. In June, all administrators will engage at our superintendent's leadership summit in dedicated training focused on implementation and leadership of the updated code. We have needed to make upgrades, of course, with the code, but we also need to make upgrades in the application of the code. Our principals have really asked for that, and that ensures that there's not that variance that we're seeing in terms of its application from school to school. Schools will embed discussions of the new behavior expectations during student orientations and through ongoing advisory or homeroom lessons, helping students understand their rights, responsibilities, and having a clear understanding of consequences when expectations are not met. Families will receive information through multiple platforms. We really need to move away from the archaic way of just distributing the hard copy Code of Conduct and sending it home and think that that is a method of communication that supports all of our families. We are looking at informational videos, utilizing standard slides for back-to-school night for principals, really creating a toolkit that will roll out in June to our principals in schools for ensuring that communication gets out in a standardized way across all of our communities. We also are looking at community info sessions to reinforce a shared understanding and partnership in student success. And I think it's key to also just say, our cross-functional teams, as they come together and are coming together, will assist schools in implementation, gathering feedback and advising on course corrections. Again, a key component is to ensure behavior interventions are aligned with equity and restorative practices. Next slide, please? So these revisions reaffirm our commitment to safe, equitable learning environments, clear behavioral expectations, and strong partnerships between schools, students, and families. I now turn it back over to you, President Yang, for discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Moran. I actually really appreciate the slide number three. When we consider how to best support our students, it's important to remember that effective learning environment requires both structure and encouragement. Like you pointed out, that consistency of discipline to set clear expectations, which is what this Code of Conduct addresses, but also the power of positive reinforcement. You mentioned many things, to motivate, to build confidence, to celebrate growth. So one without the other is incomplete. I appreciate the presentation. I'm gonna turn to my colleagues for questions or comments. Last one, I start with this set, the last discussion item. This time, I'm gonna start from this side. I'm trying to play fair right here. All right, Mr. Savannah, please go ahead.
All right, perfect. First of all, I just want to thank you for this very detailed presentation, and again, for even coming to the board with the Student Code of Conduct. You know, speaking as a student, and in my interactions with students from across the county, you know, there is not very, not a very clear sense of expectations all the is not a very clear sense of expectations all the time, right? And I think when we're talking about trying to standardize some of those expectations and then also build back some of that school culture, which is really integral to the restorative justice approach, I think this goes a long way in terms of communication out to the public. And then going to kind of reference Ms. Howe's testimony earlier, making sure that we're not just speaking in legalese with our student code of conduct, but really meeting students where they are, I think is going to be really important. I did want to highlight something that was in the presentation that I really liked and I kind of want to see really integrated into the student code of conduct from a student perspective, obviously, but the peer mediation. I think that is something that's big. I think it's on slide 10, but it's something that I think that I have counterparts from all across the U.S. that we're in contact with through various advocacy networks. And so one of my counterparts in New Jersey, it was on kind of like a long thread, talking about code of conduct, disciplinary metrics. And so one of the things that they were talking about was student-to-student support and student representation within the disciplinary process, right? So being able to use kind of like a student, like mock trial, or like a student counsel to be able to say, well, you know, we're going to, when you're walking through whatever disciplinary processes, especially for the lower infractions, right, we're going to have a student right there next to you to support you, right, and to say, and to help you get your point across, to make sure that your side of the story is being heard fairly, or if disciplinary actions are being taken, can we have some sort of student representation on that? I'm not saying, let students make their own consequences, right? Not at all, but I'm saying, let students feel like they have had a part and a voice in the process. And so it might not look like what I just said, but I think that was something that was really big and something that I liked in here, so I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Brene.
Mrs. Zimmerman.
Thank you. So one of the things that I'm struggling with a little bit is that I still see a lot of opportunity for ranging and how we intervene in behavior. There's just a lot of opportunities for varied discipline. If, you know, even if we're looking at three to five, instead of one to five, there's still multiple opportunities for different disciplines. So I'm just, I'm wondering, like, I'm just not confident in that this change will actually help us see uniformity in response to student behavior. So how can you make me more confident?
So I think, so first of all, if we're going to talk about uniformity, so we've shrunk down from one through five, first off. So let's just, the current state, let's just consider the current state, right? So you want to talk about variance, right? You got one through five. So we've shrunk it down to four through five, in some cases to three through five. And I think so the training that we're going to have in June with principals and that we're going to have also with staff is understanding that within each situation, right, it's not always just cut and dry, that we go to the automatically two of five, right? Nor should it be, right? We need to consider, you know, the circumstances of what occurred. We need to consider prior behaviors or infractions that happened. We need to really consider the level of disruption that occurs at the school. And I think that's like a key one in why we moved the social, posting things on social media, which was also one through five, to now four to five, because the level of disruption and unsafe behaviors that result from someone, let's say, posting a fight on social media usually resolves in continued things happening outside of the school building or the next day. So I think there's the training component, and that's really the application, right? Documents only as good as the training and support that's provided. There's also the directors working with principals. And then we have a new office that has a very new approach. And I think the thing that I've appreciated about the changes that we've made is the student code of conduct office will be more of an on-the-ground office. The way it's structured right now is things come to them, they get them on paper, and then they respond based off of what they read on a paper. Without having a contextual understanding of a school, a relationship with a principal, a relationship with an administrative team, a level of trust where I can receive a phone call of how I'm going to apply the code of conduct, that's another thing that eliminates variance. So I think having that, and then also using the cross-functional teams, and having everyone receive exactly the same training and exactly the same messaging and exactly the same terminology will ensure that we're able to apply it in a much more standardized way. So I got a part two to that really quick. I think I can answer this pretty concisely and say, how you determine that is really at the intersection of two things, severity and frequency. And so there's a part two to this for principals to work on, and it's actually some of the work that Dr. Moran is leading with principals later this spring and into summer, is what does the first time this happens with a student look like versus the third time that something happens? Something that's worth illuminating, too, is a big shift in our strategy is shifting from an "or" strategy to an "and" strategy. And in the past, we may have had a strategy where we do this or that, and really, our strategy is to try and be a little bit more comprehensive and a little bit more inclusive. And I'll give you two examples. We are having the expectation that restorative approaches is a part of every disciplinary conversation. That has not been the expectation before. Another good example of that might be is like, perhaps you have a student who has a drug use issue. A suspension is not the answer for that student, but when we do have some time away from the school environment and we are welcoming a child back into the learning environment, we need to make sure that they're connected to resources. That has not exclusively been our strategy in the past either. So having some kind of readmission practice, having some kind of opportunity where it is about connecting resources, repairing relationships, and crafting a path forward, because we can acknowledge that something happened in the past, we can't go back in time, we can't fix something, but what we can do is we can lay the work for what the future looks like and really try to turn everything into teachable moments. So I hope that that helps a little bit, but if there is a wide range on a given area, it's not because we're trying to grant discretion to a principal or to a teacher or something like that and say, you've got all these choices. It's because we really are trying to take into consideration the unique magnitude of an individual event and acknowledge the fact that sometimes children make mistakes more than once, and sometimes they make mistakes more than once that look very similar to previous mistakes that they've made. We hope that they learn from them the first time, but we need to create the conditions for them to have an opportunity to learn from them a little bit better.
Yeah, I think we can all appreciate the complexity and the variance that occurs in a school building, but I think then that leads then to things like our definitions needing to be a little bit stronger and well-laid out, and I think that would be helpful for the board to be able to see as well.
Ms. Silvestri.
So many questions, I don't know where to begin. First and foremost, this was much needed, so thank you, thank you, thank you. Can't agree with you more. Our students want structure, they want expectations, they want to know what is expected of them in school. So I think I'm going to begin with, how will we balance? If I'm a principal, you mentioned this new, this reconstituted office is going to help me as a principal to address some of the behaviors that maybe are repeated, and suspension, suspension, suspension is not going to work. So can you talk a little bit about, give me more detail on how, if I have a principal at a high school and I'm seeing that this student just keeps getting in trouble, the wellness team has intervened already, how is that new resource going to help me as a principal?
So the student code of conduct is more based off of the process piece and not really like providing services around a particular student. I think the service piece comes from the fact that how we're utilizing our student well-being teams, like you just said, access to our social workers, access to their counselor. But I also think that, again, and I know we've talked a lot about this, and it's something that I continue to be extremely excited about, having a cross-functional team in your building that are people who have a lot of different skill sets. We also have utilized data in a very strategic way to assign PPWs to clusters. In years prior, our PPWs who support students to access resources when they are in crisis or need behavioral support, we have not always done that in a very strategic way. So ensuring that now, you know, the number of PPWs in a cluster will be matched with the level of need that is happening in that cluster. An example, you know, just this past year, you could have more PPWs in a cluster like, let's say, Whitman than you did in a cluster like, let's say, McGruder. And just looking at what's happening in those clusters and assigning those people strategically to receive the supports that they need. I think the other thing, and it's a conversation that I think we need to have down the road, is how we utilize our alternative education programs within Montgomery County Public Schools. And we've touched on that a little bit, but I think that's an opportunity for us to have further dialogue about.
And is it true that principals feel like, because I've heard urban legends that they don't want to suspend because they have to keep their suspension numbers low because they want to be able to show that they are, that the behavior intervention is working and you're not having a lot of suspensions? So I think I've heard that we're not escalating the discipline because we don't want to suspend students. Yes, we want students in school, but that there's also this dynamic of not disciplining because it's going to look bad for your school, that you have too many suspensions or too many discipline infractions.
So I don't think that necessarily is the case. I think that in regards to suspension, there's a story or a narrative behind all different things that happen at schools. You may see, you know, an escalation in behavior because of a certain incident that involves a number of students, and that's why there's, you know, an increase in suspension on that particular week. We do review the numbers weekly and have conversations with principals about, you know, what occurred, why did we see a spike in numbers? But I think that this also is a big part of why this is needed now, because I do think that there are principals that really need the training. It's not necessarily the paper, right, but it's the training to walk through and have an understanding of, you know, being consistent with your practices, understanding what the expectations are, understanding, you know, when it's appropriate to suspend, when it's not appropriate to suspend, and the mitigating factors that are around each and every case that makes it unique, as Ms. Zimmerman raised.
Great, thank you.
So I want to circle back really quick to Ms. Silvestri's first question about having an office of student conduct. I too, I'm not sure that I've heard that there's any kind of external pressure to not suspend, or at least not this year. I haven't heard that. But I would think something that you will hear from principals is if you were to ask them, when was the last time they received training on student conduct, many of them could tell you that they have not. And I think that it is incumbent on us that if we're going to set an expectation that we not govern by memo and that we provide supports to the adults in addition to the children, and if we're going to have a set of expectations for the children, we teach the adults how to respond. And really great administrators know how to manage student conduct really well, and the likelihood is that they were really rock-solid assistant principals who were taught by great principals, and those great principals were taught by other great principals before them. And then there were some that came up through a system that didn't have a great principal, and that might be a gap in their learning as a professional. So this office, what we're aiming to do is really, is really just a couple of things. The first one is to kind of be the keeper of the code of conduct in terms of a policy and regulation standpoint. Number two, to provide direct training and retraining when necessary and to guide what that training might look like and provide some of that support. And the third one, and I alluded to it briefly in my opening comments, and we haven't talked an awful lot about it, but it's something that I'm sensitive to, is that any time you have a really significant change, is that you're monitoring that change pretty consistently. Right now, it's up to the cluster directors and Dr. Moran's office to just be on it week by week by week, and they still should be, and that should be really important. But looking at the whole of the district and looking at trends and making sure that we don't have disproportionate suspension rates that get exacerbated is something that there really does need to be a singular point of contact that is accountable to Dr. Moran, that's accountable to me, and accountable to the board to communicate what we're seeing in terms of managing this change.
Ms. Rivera-Orvis.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Peter, for the presentation, and to you, Dr. Taylor. I think this was quite overdue. I'm really happy to hear we're going to have an office and student conduct. And I, as somebody who created many programs, after-school programs with kids, including who were very heavily gang-involved and so on, I am a person of thinking that prevention is always the best method, right? Lamenting later is more costly, by the way, because to actually incarcerate a young person, it costs so much more money and is such a loss to society. So prevention is very key. I did have my issues with restorative justice, how it was being implemented, somebody who has done it. It was not very, there was no uniformity across the system. Some schools had such a, you know, and it was, so I'm happy that we're going to be looking at that. I'm too, I'm looking at the revisions and the proposed range on, you know, this code of conduct. I think it's going to be very welcome by many principals, but we do have a lot of new principals, right? And I think historically, more than ever, this is a period of time where we have new principals. So it is very timely, going with the question of my colleague, Ms. Silvestri, that we do do the training. This is actually good timing to make those transitions because everything looks good, it can look so good on paper, right? We can have the best intentions, it's very eloquent to what we want to do, but then to actually put it in practice is where I'm a little bit concerned about. So I just want to make sure that we give folks the tools, just like we're trying to implement a new curriculum on reading, and we're trying to make sure that we have the materials for that curriculum. We need to do the same thing when we're implementing any changes in this area so that our expectations are clear, not just of the students, but the expectations are also clear of the adults in those buildings. Everybody from the person who is the custodian to the person who is a security guard to the bus driver, right? We all need to have the same high expectations for our students. I am from that line that I believe that if we do not challenge kids to rise to high expectations, how are they supposed to rise to high expectations? And I'm really, you know, happy to see this. We do need to talk about the alternative programs, whether they have the materials that they need, whether they have the supports that they need. You heard me said that, like a Blair Ewing, if there's any school that needs a wellness center, it should be a school like Blair Ewing. We don't have wellness centers in all the schools, especially, you know, like in the Damascus area, the Klaxburg area, right? So there's that lack of services for some of these students. So we really need to assess, I think, school by school, and then, you know, just like we would do with anything else, right? And see where the gaps are, and just like we have these respondent teams that we're creating for different things, then they should also, we should also have a priority list of where we're seeing those gaps and keeping a very close eye on the demographics. So my question is the implementation of it. I know this isn't writing, but the implementation of it and the training and how long do you see this is going to take? What's your vision?
So I think one of the most advantage that we have this school year is we've had a long runway on things, right? I think we've been very strategic about planning things and implementing things and having conversations that have a period of time. It is extremely advantageous to be having this conversation at the beginning of May so that we have the summer to do significant work with our administrators around this. So to have a standard setting at the end of June with all of the principals, to then directors being able to go out and have one-on-one conversations about the student code of conduct, to set a communication process that is standardized across conduct, to set a communication process that is standardized across the entire system so that people are receiving information in the same way, at the same time, principals receiving training prior to back to school night, which we know is one of the most well-attended events that we have. And then also, Grace, moving away from the, the archaic communication, so working with our comms folks to have a strategic approach of informational videos, you know, whether it's, you know, newsletters, it's community, you know, bring community together to have conversations, and then shrinking things down. And I, I heard earlier, one, I believe it might have been you, commenting on the, how significant the document is. So one of the things that we've done this time, for the first time, is created an FAQ that is in every code of conduct. It's like the, the second page. And it just outlines all of the changes and upgrades that we've made. So there's a whole rebranding process, I think, that needs to take place because all it really is, there hasn't been a lot of significant changes to the code of conduct. There are tweaks here and there, but the opportunity to kind of, to reset with people and have these conversations and have a whole, you know, 90 days to actually launch it before the first day of school.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Ms. Wolf.
Thank you. I want to thank you for your work on this. It, it was definitely needed. However, I still have some concerns. Anybody that has watched me for seven years knows that discipline becomes a major concern for me. And I think my colleague Natalie used the term complexity and variance. I think that kind of sums up what my concern is. And I'm really worried that there's still a lot of subjectivity in this. Now, I know this is not the training, and this is a sort of broad discussion about it, but when I see something that says excessive disruptive talking in class, I become very concerned because that's a very subjective decision, and the subjectivity usually comes down to our little black boys. When I see something that says rude comment made with intent to harm, well, who determines intent to harm if I didn't specifically say, "I'm going to kick your behind," you know? If I didn't say that specifically, where does intent to harm come in? But I, I think what I'm trying to say is that any training is going to have to require a lot of discussion around these categories. And I have to say, I'm going to be looking at variance between schools and within schools. And as Chair of the Strategic Planning Committee, safety being a big category, I would like to see this brought to us at least quarterly in terms of what the numbers are looking like in each school, because I, I remain very concerned about impact here. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Stewart.
Speaking of impact, we are going, we're expecting more. And that message won't be out there like a light switch, right? So do you expect an increase in suspicions because of this change? Do you expect an increase?
I think it's, I think it's dependent, it could be school-dependent, similar to what Ms. Wolf just shared, in terms of like people having a solid understanding. Again, I think that, and I, and I'm going to echo what Dr. Taylor said. I, I was a principal for eight years. I was, been a, been in, you know, a director and associate for, for six. I don't recall ever receiving a training on the code of conduct. That's kind of embarrassing to put that out there. It was left up to my interpretation or the, the support that I received from my director, which there can be variance around if you don't standard set and have tight processes and structures on that. So I just want to say that I think that really what happens this summer is a determinant around what the result of its implementation is in the fall. So I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't want to say either way. I think, I think it's about being implemented with, with fidelity. You could see an increase in some schools, and you might see a decrease in some schools as a result of people having a better understanding and having a, you know, a toolkit and communicating with parents. I mean, I think we really need to, like Dr. Taylor and I have said, we're really working with our parent community to have an understanding of what the expectations are and what the consequences are when you don't meet an expectation, and those being, you know, conversations that just don't, aren't limited to classrooms, but are happen at, you know, kitchen tables and in living rooms as well.
And I just have two more quick questions.
So let's come back. So, Dr. Moran, the board's role is oversight and governance. You say we are rebranding the student code of conduct. So can you illuminate, moving forward, what data are we collecting on disciplinary actions? And how is it going to be analyzed and shared with the public? And how often would that be?
So, similar to what, you know, Ms. Wolf just shared around quarterly, I think there's, there's, there's a, there's a lot of different data. There's, of course, the suspension data, there's suspension disproportionality data, there is also the, the success rate. One of the things that we take a, a strong look at is the, in, in certain schools, and this is something that we need to make as a, as a, as a practice, where there is a very low repetitive rate of repeat suspensions in some of our schools, and what are those practices that they're doing? So I think there's the, kind of the case study approach as well of highlighting, like, specific schools, having them present and talk with other principals about the work that they're doing. I think that, you know, and, and this has not been decided yet, but I think, you know, a quarterly is appropriate. I mean, you know, Dr. Taylor's had us really looking at it, at, at it quarterly and even breaking it down to the point where we're, we're looking at it in our office, you know, weekly. It's produced for us weekly. So I, I, I don't, I wouldn't, I'm not, I don't think I'm ready to answer that, but I think it's something that needs to be, you know, discussed and determined collaboratively.
I'm glad that you will be thinking about this, to exactly what data and how it's analyzed. How do you share? How often do you share? Okay. So I'm going to go to the second round. I'm going to start from right-hand side. I think we have a lot of comments. Can we, can colleagues just go straight to questions? If you go straight to questions, you can ask two questions. If you have a comment, then you only have one question. Go, Ms. Stewart.
We haven't talked about mitigating learning loss when there's a suspension. Can you, is there any new plans on that, or is, just, what are, how do you mitigate learning loss?
So I think one of the keys to mitigating learning loss is having a reentry and intake meeting and ensuring that the parents have access to the materials that were, you know, were, were covered while the student was out of school. Sometimes those are front-loaded, you know, as much as can, can be possibly done by a school, and sometimes they're provided as an opportunity for makeup work. So I think, I think that intake and making that a standard component to every school's, you know, the expectations is, is key.
That's, that's a good answer. The mentoring piece, do you have a good mentoring program today? The reason I ask is because someone asked me about being a mentor, and I started looking, and some older programs don't seem to be in operation. I don't know what's happening. Are you ready for that?
I think that that is, is a school by school where, so overall, I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel comfortable saying yes to that question. I think there's a lot of work to be done around mentoring.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Stewart, how does it feel to ask two questions? Better? Okay, all right. Ms. Wolf, go ahead.
Well, you said as long as she had no comments.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. This is a good thing.
I, I think you probably hit on this a little bit, but I'm not quite clear on it. So how are we integrating mental health equity? I know you talked a little bit about restorative justice into this. How is this, you know, like a big picture type of thing?
Well, I think you can take an example of what the experience is for a young person right now when they have an adverse consequence, and let's say that they get suspended, suspended from school. They are out of the building for three days, and then what happens? They just show up. There's no follow-up, there's no reintroduction, there's no review of what happened, they go away, and then they come back. And the missed opportunity right there is the connection between services and addressing the need so that you don't have a repeat event and that there's not just learning from an event, but also the adults learning from a circumstance. Because what precipitated an event may not necessarily be clear in the moment, and there's some missed opportunity to connect kids to resources. I think the hope here is that with, with not just the student and school administrators, but school staff and, and also the parents being involved in a conversation of, okay, so where do we go from here and what makes the most sense, is really where the opportunity is moving forward. The idea here is to maintain and teach self-discipline, not to punish bad behavior. And there's a big difference. And so in order to teach and maintain self-discipline, that usually requires help and some support. And so I think that the, the secret sauce in this, or at least our stab at this, our attempt at getting to this, is by introducing readmission conferences and readmission conversations as a, as an integral part in what we do next.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate that we should definitely be monitoring for unintended consequences.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf, for highlighting that part. Ms. Silvestri.
Yeah, mostly comments. I really like the idea of disseminating the information through various media, videos, whatever, you know, slides, and making sure that people are actually processing the information, not just signing off or checking a box. I think that you addressed already, but I want to reiterate because there's a lot of confusion in the community, restorative justice does not replace consequences. So if I get in a fight and I harm someone, I will face the consequences as, as outlined in the code of conduct, and there has been restorative justice in my school, and there will be restorative justice after the, the incident. And I think, you know, there needs to be continued classroom management training for our teachers, because not everybody has that natural skill set, and that's the first line of intervention to prevent things from escalating. A lot of this is based on relationships, so it helps be fully staffed so that our students can have, build good relationships with our, our teachers and have that caring adult to prevent things from, from getting worse. And I guess my only question is, oh, and I read the FAQs, and there is a question about can special education students be subject to the code of conduct, and the answer is absolutely yes. So could you, my, my question is about teacher feedback. What are teachers saying about the code of conduct as you have done your work to prepare this, the changes so far?
So the, I think there's, there's strong sentiments that, around two things from our, from our teachers, is, is one, that our, our code of conduct is very vast and not strong enough in many cases. As, as I, as I showed you, the idea that, you know, a student can make a, you know, a bomb threat, or a student can attack a staff member, and there's a consideration that it might be a Level One or a Level Two, is, is a demonstration that, of a need for us to change. I think that communicates to staff not feeling safe just by looking at the paper itself.
What are they saying about the changes?
There, positive feedback about the, about the changes. I mean, it's been a similar conversation to the grading and reporting conversation. You know, we've talked, we talked with teachers a little bit about the history of the, of the code of conduct, the idea of showing, you know, grace as students came out of the, the pandemic, whether it was academic or, or character, but we're out of the pandemic. And, you know, you, students will, will rise to high expectations if they're communicated well and they're, they're, they're in a supportive environment where they receive access to the resources they need when, when they do, and if they do make a mistake.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Zimmerman.
Thank you. I just wanted to circle back to a conversation that Ms. Wolf kind of started as well, that, especially with strategic planning and looking at safety and talking about, you know, our suspension data and kind of when are we sounding the alarms and the reporting, and that Ms. Yan commented on as well. I just also wanted to make the point that I, I understand that with greater information that some things might change. I, I understand that, but it's also disheartening to hear that we could see a suspension increase because that's just not what we want for our students. But my question relates to, again, coming back to uniformity, and I'm wondering about what kind of referral forms we're using, and if that's something that we could look at being uniform across our schools?
Yeah, we, we certainly could. You know, and, and I think that a key thing for us that, that's an outcome of just this conversation is the need for, you know, a lot of the questions are yes questions if it's a high school, right? If it's, if it's all high schools. But when you say all schools, you, you get, you get into a lot of discrepancies. I think that it'd be important for us to have an, maybe an elementary school code of conduct and a secondary code of conduct. You asked a question, someone asked a question about mentoring. We have mentoring in all of our high schools, but when the question is all schools, the answer is no. We don't have mentoring in all of our elementary schools and all of our middle schools. When there was a question about, you know, support, social supports with suspensions, you know, we do have a process where we review all of our suspensions at the conclusion of the school year and examine what social supports were provided, and we should share that data back out with, with schools, right? So that they see and have an understanding of, you know, what's available and also how we're tracking it. But I think, you know, from the very get-go of your first question, I, it's not developmentally appropriate to have the same exact tools at every single level. So there needs to be differentiation across, you know, elementary, middle, and high school. You can't, I don't think we can, we should lump secondary just altogether either.
Right. So then, speaking to that, it, I think it would be something worthwhile looking into that we could have some more, like, uniform referral form or process for, you know, elementary and then middle and high school.
Right.
I, I think that could also really help with the inevitable, as we're looking at ranges here, the inevitable bias that we're trying to eliminate.
Mm-hmm. It's great feedback. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Savannah.
Yes, I'll try to make this relatively short. Again, just want to thank you one more time. I want to say, like, as we kind of look into some, getting some more of the specifics out on paper, I'd love to see some, some, like, really solid community engagement, especially, you know, with students and parents and, and, and teachers, just to really kind of better understand maybe some data that might be, may or may not be presented back to the board. Yeah, we would always love to see more data. But just, just kind of, just kind of wanted to throw that out there. And then I also wanted to mention, ah, it's hit my mind, but, oh, if I, if I have it, I'll come back later, but, you know, I think, I just, again, I think this, the testament to, to, to the work, oh, here, here's what it is, right? Student code of conduct is usually referenced as like student rights and responsibilities, right? So we talked a lot about the responsibilities part, right? What are the responsibilities of the student, the expectations of the student? But I think a really big part should also be what are the rights of the student, right? Like, the student has the opportunity to explain themselves, the student has an opportunity, like, what, what do you get as a function of being a student within our school system, and what is the due process that we give you, right? And so really making sure that students understand that, you know, we're not here to just come out and punish you, we're ready to, you know, hear your side of the story, but, you know, if you make a mistake, you're going to have consequences for it, but, you know, it's not going to be like one person levying these consequences on you, like, you will have your, your fair say, your, like, your, your ability to say what you're, what happened on your side of things. And then really having an autopsy of that at a central level to be able to see, were consequences levied fairly? Can we look at all sides? And then, then we can kind of get into some of the biases that, that we're talking about later on and really analyzing and deconstructing some of those things. Thank you.
Thank you. My final question, and actually is a suggestion, is related to many of my colleagues. So student code of conduct is updated frequently. It has been yearly.
Each year, yeah.
Each year. So what I would like to see, if you already have a plan, you can share, but what we'd like to see is, how do you gather ongoing feedback from students and parents of how the code is working in practice? Okay? Because it's a new thing, we're setting new expectation, we have a new process, we're going to collect all, so how is it working in practice? Staff feedback, student feedback, parents' feedback, we should have an approach to collect.
So, welcome to the uncharted territory of where we are, is that that has not necessarily been a mechanism that MCPS has, has explored. And I will say that if there's a criticism to levy, it's that past changes in the code of conduct were made in a vacuum, and they were made largely about what we centrally thought we needed to do.
thought we needed to do one way or another, or on the recommendation of school administrators, and did not really have that feedback loop. One of the reasons that we were really excited about even bringing this forward is because it's not a topic that the Board has really entertained or really that has gotten a lot of public attention, but it gets a lot of public attention in terms of feedback from the community, in terms of what we hear from public testimony, what we hear when we engage the community, but it doesn't show up in the form of a formal presentation. This, I think, should be an annual discussion of the Board, and it should be an annual discussion of the Board in the context of feedback that we're collecting from regular reports that the Board presents in terms of data. I will say this, I've shared this with a couple of Board members already, I'm happy to share this publicly, that I'm actually comfortable with a more frequent data reporting of the number of incidents that we have in schools. I think that that's actually been a weakness of ours. We've been scared to do it because we're scared to talk about it. It might even surprise some people to know that we are actually a district that does not suspend very much relative to other school districts. That being said, we shouldn't be afraid to put that information out there. We really need to own this information, we need to put it out there, we need to talk about this in the context of not just consequences and punishment, but how we maintain safety, how we maintain self-discipline, and what our strategies are and what makes sense to tweak over time, because how it is right now, it has the look of being very arbitrary, and it has the look of being decision-making in a vacuum. And like many things that we've done this year, we're hoping to bring light to things that have been kind of shrouded. And so we welcome this opportunity, even if it means that we are opening ourselves up to possibly some public criticism. We see that public criticism and feedback as an opportunity to get better.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Now, colleagues and staff and TV viewers, we have been at this for three hours and eight minutes, so I will call for a short recess because we still have two big topics coming up, a boundary and program analysis and legislative session wrap-up. So let's take a five-minute break, and then reconvene.
Ms. Yang.
President Yang, can I motion for a five-minute recess?
Please do.
Second.
All in favor? All right.
Hi, everyone. Welcome back to the second and even more exciting part of our May 8, 2025 Board of Education Business Meeting. Now, before we go on to the next item, I want to do this item justice. It's our Secondary Program Analysis Overview and Boundary Study Community Engagement Plan Update. So I would like to table some items. Can I have a motion to table some items on our agenda for future meetings?
Move to table which items?
The legislative affairs.
The legislative some update to a later board meeting.
Okay, so there's a motion of table item 9.1 Legislative Session Overview. Do I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous with those present. Now, to make things official, we earlier decided not to approve the CKLA Middle School ELA Curriculum. I just want to be on the record to say table the curriculum approval till the next board meeting. May I have a motion?
Move to table our curriculum approval till the next board meeting.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you, everyone. That's unanimous with those present. And I think later on, Ms. Mutoya will join us online, so let's start our next presentation. Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. My printed remarks say that I'm excited to bring forward today's presentation. I will say that my excitement was waning, but it's picking back up again because we've tabled some items. We're moving things along, and it is a really important topic. And this is becoming a regular update for the board on this critical topic. And something that the board has mentioned is that you want this to be so pervasive that you get stopped everywhere and asked about this. And we also want people to understand that this will impact a very wide majority of the students and families in our community. And so it's important that we give regular updates about our Secondary Program Analysis and Boundary Study Community Engagement Plan, which is really the focus for today. Though this presentation is primarily about our Community Engagement Plan revisions tied to the boundary study, today's presentation will first look at a critical decision point tied to our program analysis. The Boundary Study is designed to make recommendations to determine attendance zones for students' homeschool in selected areas of the county, while the program analysis is district-wide and focused, while the program analysis is district-wide and focused on providing equitable program access. These two parallel studies directly are connected because program capacities in each building will inform the capacity within each school attendance boundary. Essentially, we need to consider which programs each school has and the size or capacity of each program at the same time as we determine the capacity of each attendance boundary zone. So there's a lot of moving parts here. Consequently, as we conduct this boundary study conversation, frequent questions are raised about programs, and that's why we're doing these things together. The goal of the Secondary Program Analysis is to ensure that all students have access to high-quality programs that meet their interests, meet the interests of the community, reflect the needs of industry in the region, and optimize our resources as a school system. We know that we have high-interest programs with barriers to access, including limited capacity and geographic location. One of the most significant barriers to access is often student transportation. It's availability, the time of travel, and of course, the distance. The hard reality that we're facing today is that we do not have capacity to expand transportation services for our current portfolio of programs without making significant changes to the programs themselves. Similarly, providing enough program capacity to meet the level of our students' interests will require more than expanding our current offerings. With those things in mind, we are at an important juncture in our program analysis and boundary study journey. We will need to consider options and adopt a model for programs that will synchronize with our capacity for each attendance zone or high school home attendance boundary. One option would be to maintain our current structure with some minor adjustments and to provide limited transportation services, as we're doing right now. This has some advantages, namely that we can manage the change easily with this approach. And this approach does not get us, although this approach does not get us the level of equitable access that comports with our school system values or that the community is really seeking. So that's one of the limitations. Another option that we're exploring is to establish regions across the district, and that was even mentioned earlier today, to create parallel program options across all areas of the county. This approach allows us to increase access to program opportunities while also reducing the distance to programs and expanding program capacity in more schools. With this option, we could provide both transportation and similar program access throughout the entire county. Looking through the equity lens, this appears to be more aligned with the goals, with our goals, and a more favorable option. That being said, these are big decisions ahead for us and for our community. It is an exciting time to be in Montgomery County, for sure. So let's dive right in. It's my pleasure to introduce our Chief Academic Officer, Nikki Hazel, who will begin the presentation and kick it off from there.
All right. Good afternoon. I'm excited to be here as well to talk about our work with the program analysis. And our partners will also talk about the Boundary Community Engagement Plan. If you can go to the next slide, please. Just a reminder that as we look at program analysis, we are really focusing on ensuring equitable access. And we want to make sure that access is happening across our district. And so our analysis is for the entire district. And the Boundary Studies, again, is focused on particular areas. And they are focused mostly today on the Community Engagement Plan. If you go to the next slide, as Dr. Taylor outlined in his opening, this is just a visual representing what he just shared. First option is really to take a look at our current existing programs and make some slight enhancements to what we currently have, but we would still run into some issues around transportation and likely issues around equitable programming across the district. The second option is, represents the other option that he shared, which is having regions within our school district. And in this model, option number two shows six regions. And you can see there that there are schools within each region. And the idea behind this concept is that each region would have similar programs. So for example, we could have Health Sciences if that was something that elevated as a program of interest, that there could be Health Sciences programs in each region. They may not be exact, but they would be very similar. And that would allow students to have easy access to that program within their region. So this is a concept that we are really exploring. If you go to the next slide, you can see just a reminder of our goals. We've been working with a cross-office stakeholder group. I say cross-office, we have some folks from offices, but community mostly, of about 70 individuals who are representing all areas of our school district. And when we meet with them, we are really making sure that we outline these goals each time. We want to ensure that all of our local schools are strong. We want to ensure that there's equitable programming happening in each school. We want to make sure that we are hearing from our students in terms of what they feel is important for programming. So we're looking at the data, and we're also going out and talking to students. We want to hear from our community members about what they believe are really strong programs for the future. And then we're also looking at industry needs, industry demand. So that's an area that is really critical as we do this work. And then, of course, we're looking at our resources, transportation. What are, what buildings do we have? So we're looking at all of those components as well. So those are the things we're keeping in mind as our group is thinking about programs. So if you go to the next slide, we meet with a group weekly, and we have shared with them those two options. And we've gotten a lot of really good feedback from that, from our group around the second option of the regions. But they also have a lot of really good questions that they've been asking. And you can see some of the questions that are listed there. But the theme is really around how do we make sure that each region is equal in terms of resources, in terms of high-quality instruction? How do we make sure that there's diversity across the district as we put the regions together? So those are just some of the questions. But they have been wonderful about really great questions that we need to think through as we do this work. I do want to say it is not the work of this group to determine what the regions are going to be. We are really just focused on what the programs will be for each of the regions. If you go to the next slide, again, I share that we are meeting with the group weekly, and we do appreciate their commitment to this work. They're very much engaged. And we also have been going out to students. So we've been going to Blake High School, Damascus Kennedy, Richard Montgomery, Gaithersburg, Springbrook. And we are also meeting with students in the Identity After School Program at Watkins Mill High School. And we've been getting a lot of really great feedback from students about what they would like to see from programs. And then finally, we are doing a survey that we've put, have put out to the community. We've gotten some great responses, but we are continuing to work with our Family Engagement Office to get more feedback, working with schools, working with principals, so that we can hear from all of our families at different levels, elementary, middle, and high, about what they are interested in. And then we will expect the survey to close on the 15th of this month. And we will be back to the board meeting on May 22 to share our initial thinking around programs based on their feedback. So at this time, I'm going to hand it over to the Boundary.
Good afternoon. So next slide, please. So we are here to talk about the main key points from our Community Engagement Plan. But before we do, we wanted to kind of point out some of the recurring questions that we have been getting in our initial meetings that we have had and throughout our feedback process that we have from the community. And wanted to talk a few about some of these questions to answer them here before we dove into the Community Engagement Plan itself. I want to give a plug to our website for the Boundary Study. These questions are now updated onto the Boundary Study webpage. There is a section for frequently asked questions. So we would expect everybody and request everybody to visit that page often because these questions, these are, you know, some of the questions that we have received, but we continue to receive more questions, and those will be updated throughout the Boundary Study process. So I wanted to talk about some of the questions we are receiving. So one of the first ones that we have heard over and over is why are so many middle and high schools included in each Boundary Study scope, especially those that aren't close to the new high schools? So the reopening of the Woodward High School, as well as the new Crown High School, and the expansion of Damascus High School was set up to help alleviate several overcrowded high schools in the study areas. The Boundary Study is necessary to populate these schools and to help relieve overcrowding. And so at the middle school level, it is going to be necessary for us to identify feeder schools to the Woodward and Crown and a better balanced utilization in the middle school level, which is why we have 19 of our high schools involved in this study, as well as 31 more middle schools. So a total of 50 schools are involved. Another question we received is how do the Boundary Studies impact families with young children? Even the elementary schools are not included in the scope of the Boundary Study, which is a great question. And we want to make sure that the families do understand that families that have children in the elementary school, during this study, we're not going to be looking at the boundaries for the elementary schools themselves. However, the assignments and articulation for these students that are in the elementary school could change as a result of the study. So the middle schools they're going to attend in the future, as well as the high school could change. So this is how the families are going to be impacted. We want to make sure this is clear to the families. So all the families that have schools in the elementary school are also paying attention to the Boundary Study progress. We're getting questions about any of the factors in the board policy weighted more heavily than the others. Just a quick reminder, the board has four policy factors that are listed in Policy FAA. And these are demographic characteristics of the student populations, geography, stability of school assignment over time, and facility utilization. And then we want to reiterate that these factors are weighed equally and not one of them takes precedence over the others. So when we do develop a recommendation to the board, we will provide a rationale for each recommendation that demonstrates the extent to which any of the recommendation advances each of the four factors. The other question we received is how can we give feedback on the Boundary Study options? And how does my feedback factor into the decision-making progress? So this is one of the very important questions. We want to make sure that the, you know, people are aware of the many different ways that they can engage. Obviously, the public information meetings, we're going to share a little bit of information about that later in this presentation, is a great way for people to engage their forms on our website where they can put in their comments, as well as there will be opportunities during the board's presentation and workshop later in the year in the study process where they can provide input. And we're going to be capturing all these through the survey results, as well as the comment that we get. And we'll be providing that on a periodic basis to both the superintendent and the Board of Education. That's going to be factored into the decision-making process. When will the new boundaries go into effect? And which grades will Crown High School and Woodward High School open with? So that's a question we're getting as well. The Boundary Study is going to affect in August of 2027. That's when the new high schools will open. It's been, and standard practice, that new high schools open with ninth and 10th grade. That would be the recommendation made to the board. And same thing with the middle school. If any changes in the boundary affect 6th and 7th grade, will be the affected changes with the 8th grades allowed to remain in their current school. Just want to remind everybody that ultimately, the decision about, you know, which grades we start with, as well as which grades remain, depends, you know, obviously, that's a board decision. What are school walk zones and how do they factor into the Boundary Studies? Which is also another question we've been getting. Walk zones are developed for middle and high schools. Will be developed in coordination with our Transportation Department. We're working closely hand-in-hand with them. The Department of Transportation analyzes safety and walkability conditions to recommend appropriate walk zones and routes to schools in alignment with board policy EEA. Typically, the, according to the board's policy, a two-mile walk zone is established for high schools and 1.5-mile walk zone is established for middle schools. The next slide, please. So the, during our last board meeting with the, when we were talking with the board members, we, you know, some of the key points that was highlighted and identified by the board members are purpose and goals. And the, you know, we want to make sure for all our meetings that the stakeholders, that we're presenting them with an opportunity to review the initial boundary options and provide feedback. So this is, we're focusing this discussion on the upcoming meetings, which we'll talk about a little bit more. But we want to make sure that we provide the stakeholders with an opportunity to review the options and give us feedback based on the options that are presented. Timeline and milestones, we will, we have identified the dates and times and locations. We'll go over that a little bit later in the presentation. And locations for these initial option sessions. And then we'll provide information to the community about the accompanying survey, how they can take it. Accessibility of information and resources. So language and other accessibility services will be available to allow for greater participation, as well as in-person and virtual sessions for flexibility in scheduling, giving people as many opportunities as possible to engage with us. Outreach and community representation. The visibility and expectation for participation in these phases will expand greatly compared to the information session we had, which we had last month. And stakeholders will get an opportunity to review the options in this process. And they will get a chance to explore the initial options for both the Boundary Studies and provide feedback. And it will be important for the information about these sessions to be shared widely. So we're going to try to reach out to as many people as possible through many different ways. We'll talk about those in a second as well. And then we will be continuously monitoring for any upgrades and modifications needed based on the feedback that we receive from the board members, as well as the community members, to allow us to ensure that we're maximizing meaningful participation and engagement throughout this process. The next slide, please. Just a quick reminder about our board policy FAA. Facilities planning, demographic characteristic of students is one of the factors. So the goal is to create diverse student body in each of the affected schools in alignment with board policy ACD. Geography is the other factor, taking into account the geographic proximity of the communities to schools, as well as articulation and traffic patterns and transportation patterns. Stability of school assignment, make sure the assignments stay stable over a long period of time as possible so we're not moving students frequently. And then facility utilization is the remaining factor with a goal of utilizing 80 to 100% utilization for all of our middle schools and high schools as much as possible, and obviously, being fiscally responsible to minimize capital and operating costs whenever possible. I'm going to now pass it over to Ms. Mulchiori to talk us about the resources, as well as upcoming meetings.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Okay, so we just wanted to take a second. Adnan had mentioned this earlier, that we've been really trying to update the website. We've been listening to people and saying, why is this down here? Can you move this? Can you find this? So every day, I think I'm sending emails saying, can we fix this? And so a couple of the highlights, we just wanted to remind you that there is the Ask a Question. As Adnan pointed out, that really has informed our first round of FAQs. The questions that were asked that are more specific to the actual initial options, like is my neighborhood going to be impacted? Obviously, we can't answer those yet because those are very specific. But you can see that the first round of FAQs are up. We read them very fast because we want to get to the discussion part, but they are there, and you can spend some time looking at them. Our policies and regulations are available. And now we have the upcoming engagement opportunities for the initial rounds, which we'll talk about in a second. We are going to post the initial survey results. We'll show them with you. And then in two slides, I'm going to talk about the interactive tool. Next slide, please. Okay, so we are in the May or June Initial Options phase, which is about to start. So we have meetings scheduled in schools that are included in the scope for each of the two Boundary Studies. What we decided to do was to start with virtual sessions so that people could join, listen, participate, get information, and then from there, determine whether or not they would want to participate in an in-person session. I can tell you from the RSVPs that we have been getting that the majority of people are selecting the virtual sessions. And so for us, that's really helpful to know because we were hesitant to do that because it felt more impersonal. However, we're seeing, at least from the initial, that that is really what people are interested in. The other thing that we did, based on feedback, is we have the sessions running as hour-long sessions. And you can see the agenda is listed that shows people exactly what's going to happen in that hour. That was another piece of feedback that we got, that people felt like in the informational round, well, you talked to us for two hours. That's not interesting. It's not engaging, and you took a lot of my time, which is fair. So you can see, in terms of locations, we met with our community project team. They looked at the maps. And so on the map, we're trying to start close to the impacted areas where the new schools will be and kind of spread out from there. And so you'll see that. Also, what's available. In May and June, sometimes it's a little tricky to get access to our buildings, but they've been wonderful and very accommodating. I'm going to talk as well about sort of this idea of the additional hybrid and virtual sessions because this is something that we have felt strongly about. And I have heard in the other presentations today, it's really been something that's been lacking. And so we just want to, as we've given a big shout out to our comms department for constantly updating and making changes based on all the feedback. We would also like to give a big shout out to Ms. Elba Garcia, who is going to be the Deputy Chief for the Division of Family, Community, and Engagement. And we are so excited to partner with her because I've been working with her for several years. And now we really get to have access to her full office, which is currently called Parent Community Coordinators, who work in schools and who have relationships with families and who have the ability to communicate with families in ways that we just may not be as able to. And so she has come up with a plan where they're coming to all of our meetings to really sort of wrap their heads around the content. And then they're also doing sort of smaller versions of these meetings in their communities. And we're so excited, so thankful and excited about that because it's really the idea of how do you do this? Well, this is what we're going to do. We're going to have them in our spaces so they get a sense of what the content is. We're working with her to come up with sort of a shortened version of it that can be translated well, not just Google translated, but translated well so that there's understanding. And then our colleagues will go out into those spaces and be able to have those sessions and give us that feedback. So we're super excited about that part of it. And we just want to give a really big shout out to her and to some of our other partners who are also have offered and who are willing to do that work with us as well. Next slide, please. Okay, and this is the big thing. I started to talk about this at our last meeting, and I brought my phone this time so you could see. So in addition to in-person meetings and some of these sort of more creative versions that we're talking about, there are people who will not be able to engage in these ways. I have to leave right after this to go drive to Baltimore for cheer tryouts for world teams, and I will be sitting in my car, and so I have my phone. So what we are designing for the interactive piece of this, which will be available to everyone, everyone, regardless of whether or not you everyone, everyone, regardless of whether or not you RSVP to a session or attend a session, is a tool where you'll be able to see, let's say there are three options for the Charles Woodward reopening boundary study. I can click on a video that will show me highlights of that option related to the factors. I can click on map and see my little interactive map, as well as some static maps. And then, I can click on the data and see the accompanying data tables that some people are very interested in, you know, looking at in terms of each option. And then, at the bottom, you see that little blue hand. You click on the survey and you fill out the survey. And so, what this allows us to do is to reach people in person, reach people online, reach people in places where they are more comfortable, with people they are more comfortable with, and reach people who have to go sit in the car for two hours, and really want to participate, but maybe not in the way that's always been thought of as a traditional way to participate. And so, again, this is our best thinking for our initial round. We are actually coming back before we do this. So if we have any other great ideas, we'll be very excited to share those as well. But we really wanted to use this opportunity to say, we have thought long and hard about a lot of the feedback we've gotten, and have really tried to come up with ways to meet people where they are and give them everything they need to participate in any way that is comfortable to them, just like any other person who would be potentially impacted by this. Next slide, please. Thank you so much. We'll turn it over to discussion? Yes?
All right. Wonderful. Colleagues, we are going to structure our questioning into two parts. First, we will solely focus on the program analysis. And then, when that's wrapped up, we'll move on to the boundary study, community engagement. All right? So, we are going to go for the secondary program analysis. I'm going to start this side with Ms. Stewart. Go ahead, Ms. Stewart.
Okay. Simple question. The website, by the way, it looks great. Yay! But I actually haven't checked the program website yet. But can we please link to the program website on our boundary website? And on our boundary website, you know, vice versa?
I believe the messaging that's going out tonight, if I'm correct, has that information, so that it will link back and forth.
Okay. Because on the website itself, I just looked at the boundary website, I don't see a link to the program. Because, to tell you the truth, like, a lot of people, because we're doing them at the same time, they are kind of interrelated, they're not going to realize, "Oh, yes, that's where the survey is, over there," because we have the survey for the programs, and I think it's still open, correct?
Yes, absolutely. Programs are still open until the 15th.
Until the 15th. And so...
So there is a message going out that we'll combine.
Awesome. Okay. So, anyway, simple question. I'll come back with more.
Thank you. Now, colleagues, the same incentive. If no comment, you ask two questions. If you have a long comment, maybe a very short question. All right, Ms. Wolf.
I'm going to just tack on to what Laura said. In my community, they don't seem to understand where they are in any of this process. So, I would like to see information going out specifically to them in the Northeast Consortium, Rockville High School, McGruder, and there was a third one that was in it. Was it, which one was it? There's a third one that's not a part of the boundary study. But they need to know that they are a part of something, and what that exactly is, because they're not sure. So, just the idea of linking the two will help, because if you're talking about going to possibly a regional, you know, regional models, they need to know that they ought to pay attention to everything, not just the program analysis. And I think right now, when I'm talking to them, I'm telling them that part of it, because we haven't gotten any further. But they're not sure where they are in this, this whole process.
Thank you for that comment. Looking at this side, Ms. Svestri?
Yeah, just, I think we heard testimony about the programs. And I think, I think everybody wants equity of programs throughout the county. The question is, how are you going to ensure that they're all well-resourced? We know that the school community contributes greatly to, you know, add-ons to the core program. So, I think that's, the resourcing is the question that we need to be able to answer. And what do you tell people when they ask that question?
I, that is a part of the discussion that is happening when we meet with our community. That's probably one of the biggest areas that they want to ensure. Like, this sounds great, but we want to make sure that it's well-resourced and that we have strong teachers in all of those programs. And so, as we, after we get through this first phase of identifying what those programs will be, then the next phase really is, and how do we make this happen? And we need to build that out, and really talk about, you know, what are the non-negotiables, and what is a must in terms of those programs being very strong, and building that out. So, that's really becomes phase two.
Yeah. So maybe for now, just getting more feedback on, what would you like to see to rest assured that there will, these programs will be well-resourced regardless of what part of the county that we'll be in?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Rivera Oven?
Thank you. So, for the secondary program analysis, when I go on the website, I see the boundary study And most people live on their phones these days, like many of us do. So, if the survey's closing on May 15th, I was trying to look for the, for the link to just push on it.
Yes. We have a message, a new message coming out.
Okay, okay. That would be, that would be great, because we're already at, what is today? The 8th and 9th? It might be the 9th by the time we're done. I, I just think, you know, and, and our communications committee last night, it was very clear that people's span of attention is very short. And, and I think, you know, Mr. Chris Graham actually should be sitting at this table, because, you know, he knows what I'm talking about. You like, literally don't have even a minute, you have seconds to capture people's attention, right? And if it's too cumbersome or too long, you lose them. So unfortunately, that's the society we live in. But I think if the message is very clear, how important it is that this can affect not only personally your child, but this can affect your community as a whole, and how important the input is to be able to change and look at some of the inequities that we are seeing and that we have heard for years about the access to certain programs, right? Because people want to understand, "Well, if I want my kid to, to do this, they have to be picked up in Tacoma Park, and they have to be driven all the way to Poolsville. If I want my kid to do such and such, they have to go to, you know, have to be picked up from Poolsville, go to Blair." Like, why is, why is that, right? So, explaining some of these options and how that would affect them, I think is really important. And I feel for you. Let me just say that, because this is heavy lifting, right? Because communities don't like to take surveys. I don't care how well you speak English, or whatever language, just surveys are not just a thing that we like to do. So I guess the messaging, for me, has to kind of be, be clear. And thank you so much for, you know, for having Ms. Elba as part of this, because that is, I think, very key, because she works with a very, very diverse groups of folks, not just, you know, the Spanish community, but she works for like, a very, you know, just folks who get information in a different way, and, and then they respond, maybe not through service, but a different way. So, I'm just wondering, if you, once you come back to us, and maybe you didn't get a good response, instead of starting over, maybe now with the survey, maybe if there's other options where people can give feedback to you guys besides, besides a cumbersome survey? I don't know. You, you guys are doing the work. But I guess, for me, it's also making sure that we hear voices that we usually don't, don't hear. And maybe a survey might not be the most, you know, I know it's the easiest, but it might not, might not be the best way. So if you have other, have you been thinking about maybe other, you know, avenues in order to capture that information?
Thank you. We're still on the program evaluation.
Yeah, so, so, from the programs' perspective, we, we have. We started off strong with participation, and then we kind of got a little bit of a lull. So, yeah, so, we are, we've regrouped and working with Elba and Chris Graham to rethink our communications, or we have something new coming out today. And we also are going to be working with, like I said, our principals to get things out, newsletters, going to some parent meetings. We're also going to be doing some work in some of our communities. So, we definitely know that there's a, we've talked about it earlier, certain populations of our community that we want to hear from more, that we're going out specifically to hear from. So, yes, we're trying to, and, but, I will say, the survey is not cumbersome. It's, to address that, it's very simple, and it gets immediately to the point. It just, and it then lists different types of interests that families may have, but it is short. It gets to some of the demographic information that we want to have from our parents. It asks about transportation in terms of distance, and it's, it's, it's very simple for families to fill out.
Just very quickly, one thing we heard from the community last night, from the different groups, demographically, geographically, they said it's so important to have the principals buy into this, because they are very trusted adults, right? In a sense, among the families and the students. So, if they see that as a priority from the principal, and the principal says, "Please fill, fill this, this out for us," you, you can actually get a better return for, for your money.
Maybe, I know there's light from Mr. Savannah and Ms. Montoya is online. I actually see Mr. Graham in the audience. Maybe he can come up, since principals' names have been mentioned a few times. I know he has a, a plan about how to...
And Ms. Elba, too.
Push this to, and then, I was going to save Ms. Elba for the later on, the PCC discussion for the boundary, so I want her to sit tight. She will have a chance to share later on. Okay. Ms. Graham, please go ahead.
So, yes, in fact, some of the updates that you wanted to the website, Ms. Stewart, I was doing from the back of the room just now. Yes, the program study does have the boundary study webpage connected there, and as of a moment ago, the boundary study page has the link to the program study page.
That is service. My goodness. Thank you.
But, as member Grace Rivera Oven has pointed out, that our meeting last night with the Board of Education Communications Advisory Committee pointed out many, many great and important ways that are not surprising to us for how we can engage with our community. We fully understand how important communications for both of these programs, both of these projects is, and we're going to be doing it very thoroughly. Ms. Garcia is still sitting in the audience, but we're working very closely together, even though we're not close at the moment. Please come to the table. And now, she's at the other end of the table. But we're working very closely together to make sure that this communication, this outreach, this engagement is going to be very thorough. One part that is something that you know very deeply is that we can write, we can post, we can be in social media, we can do all the things that we typically do in simple ways, but until we truly engage in our face-to-face, often in the other languages that are spoken in our community, have we really engaged? You know, one of the quotes I like to use often is that one of the greatest illusions in communications is that it has occurred. You can't presume that it has occurred. So you must be very thorough, you must saturate, you must measure against what you've done. Have you been successful? Is your discussion about the survey with the program analysis? And how can we make sure that we're getting to audiences that maybe it hasn't reached yet? So we've got to pause and do that analysis, so that we do a better job throughout the project, not just now and later.
Can you specifically talk about principal? I ask you to come forward to talk about how to engage our principal to engage their community.
So, the last two weekends, I've sent templated messages and requested that they use those messages in their weekend updates. The curriculum office has prepared and done the very same thing, and I'm going to repeat that message tomorrow, so they'll get it both from me and from Ms. Hazel's office. And I think we're using ever more emphatic tones to encourage them to put it in their weekend messages. But as we all know, the principals are some of our most trusted communicators. And when families hear from them, they very often listen more closely than when they hear from Montgomery County Public Schools. So they're one of our networks and trusted partners in this.
So you are pushing it out to the principals?
Yeah, and we'll be doing it again this weekend.
Thank you so much. Ms. Garcia, you will have a chance later on. All right. Mr. Savannah, please go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to, you know, thank the ever-expanding table for all the work that they've done. You know, as, as a student, particularly pertaining to programs, who's gone to multiple program schools, actually, my freshman year, for those of you who don't know, I went to Richard Montgomery. I had an hour bus ride, and then I, at the end of the year, I was like, "I can't, I can't continue to do this." And so then, I transferred back to my home school. So that, that's one thing. I want to be very, very, very clear. I think we need to keep, keep the, the things that we're very good at doing and just expand them, right? I, I think, you know, looking at some of our models, I think we have, we have great models, and I, I really hesitate to, I, I just want to make sure that we're not trading one type of equity for another, right? And so, that when, when we're looking at this program evaluation, that we're really making sure it's being done with fidelity. And I know that's going to be, you know, the central theme, the central topic to all of this, but maintaining, you know, the high level of excellence that some of our programs are known for, expanding some of our other programs, and really figuring out what students want out of their school, and how to make their school environment a lot more interesting, right? I mean, the big reason why I chose to go to Richard Montgomery is because I wanted to be really engaged in, in a school community on academic side, right? And then, when it came down to my extracurriculars and being able to do that alongside my academics, it wasn't able to work for me, because, again, because I had a very difficult time with, with the bus ride and, and all of that, and especially because I was doing some unconventional extracurriculars at the time. So again, that's speaking for, for a little bit more for me, but I know a lot of students who are in the same boat, especially when we think about some of our schools that are a little bit more out of the way, like Poolsville, right? And, and some of the bus rides there. I have friends who are on hour-and-a-half bus rides from Poolsville, and those are, those are always really, really tough. So, I just want to, it's not really a question, right? But I just want to be very clear. Whenever we're looking at this program evaluation, let's, I, I want there to be very consistent communication with students and outreach, to see, what, what do you want out of a program? What are you trying to gain out of this program? Why did you choose to come here? Why would you choose to come here, right? And what were some deciding factors in this decision, right? And I think part of that outreach should really be, you know, because we don't want to assume that a student wants one program for one thing and another program for another thing, when we might just be missing the point altogether, right? I'm not here to say what that point is or isn't, but to say, we really need to kind of figure out, as a community, what, what our students are looking for, and then do our best to provide that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for always advocating for our student voice. Ms. Montoya.
I don't have any comments or questions.
No, at a moment. All right, Ms.?
No, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to also make sure that our staff is included in this, too, when that's going out to them, particularly as there are two choices. And as Mr. Savannah was talking about, student commute, there's also the staff commute element of it, and if their program is changing schools and all that, like, I think we could also all, from the table, speak to the educators that we know that really advocate for the programs that they love, and I think this would be a great avenue for them to do that as well. Thank you.
Right. I have a question, very simple ones. Some of our high schools have signature programs. That's specific to the school. Water Johnson has Apex. One school might have Academy of Finance, that's their signature program. Does this include, count that as our offerings, or this does not count that in our program analysis?
So that's a good question. We want to make sure, as we're doing this program analysis and looking at the regions, that if there are individual schools that have those signature programs and they're running well, that we may just leave them to be a part of that local school program. But in some... But in some cases, it may be if we find that from the students and from our community and our survey, that it's something that more want, that it may be something that we have in all of our regions. So we are really keeping things open at this time to look at the data. But if there are those signature programs in local schools that are special and unique to that school and they're working very well, we want to honor that and keep that.
Now then, my second very short question is special education programs. We have a lot of different kinds of special education programs. Some has, some is very largely needed, like autism program. But others is more tailored to very, for example, we have some programs that are smaller for people who have severe, like long view or whatever. So when we look at this program analysis, are we thinking about geographic parities for special education programs? Or are we taking a special approach to special education programs?
We will be taking a special approach. We are not looking at special education at this time. We are specifically looking at the second high school programs. But special education is a part of this larger program analysis as well as our pre-K programs. Because we want to ensure that we have programs, again, equitable placed, that there's transportation. But we also know with changing leadership with special education, we wanted to make sure that they were a part of this analysis as well. So they will be joining the programs analysis, but not at this time.
This time is just secondary high school academic programs, not including.
And so there's some very good reasons as to why we would do that beyond just leadership changes as well. These are the things that are going to be massive drivers to capacity. And so the reason that this is such an important decision point or inflection point is because in order for us to draw attendance zones, we really do need to have a good idea of how much program capacity to allow for in each school. I usually reserve adverse comments or bad news for Ms. McGuire to deliver. But I'll make an exception for today and say, it will not surprise you to learn that, you know, we, our distribution of special education programs is not equitable. It is something that we have to include in this process, although it can be part of the process that's much later, because the capacity impacts are less significant. And that's really what it's about, is how do we have a numbers management component to this that can free up the boundary work to occur without us locking us into too many decisions too early on in the process? In general, and something else that we could improve upon with our special education program is that we really do need to do a better job of serving more of our students closer to their attendance zone.
Absolutely. The two-hour bus rides-
The lengthy bus rides are not a good solution for our students with disabilities. They're not a good solution really for any of our students. So if we have that sensitivity, that needs to be something that's included in our planning. It is. But right now, our program decision inflection point is really about how we can draw the boundary lines and make the boundary line process work a little faster.
Okay. And then I go Ms. Stewart and Ms. Savannah, then we'll move on to the second part. Ms. Stewart.
This is a really important question and it might be complicated to answer, but please do your best. Consortium versus regions. This is a hot topic.
Yeah.
I see Dr. Taylor's jumping on it.
Sure, sure. Well, like all things, you know, I don't think that we're locked into one option or another, but it is an opportunity for us to revisit. And, you know, the perfect thing that we have that works to our favor, which it's wonderful that we actually have something working to our favor, at least from a program lens, maybe not from a boundary lens, is that we have a two-year runway. So a lot can be ironed out and a lot can make sense. I think one of the challenges that we've experienced with the consortia is that not all of the program opportunities within the consortia have the level of access that we really think reflects our values. And the volume and quality of programming may be not representative of what we want as well. So I think whether you call it a consortia or whether you call it a region, or we're doing what we're doing in other parts of the county, this is just wholesale an opportunity to say, is this really working for us? And if it's not, this is an opportunity for us to make a turn. If there are elements that we like that are working for us, we would want to preserve those things. So maybe we're going to try to not get caught up in the words per se, so much as the ideas, and try to land the idea that makes the most sense for folks in the community.
To help in that, though, as we move forward, I think it would be really good to get some of that data on the consortia, you know, who actually gets to go to what school and what choice, et cetera. Anyway, just so we can level set before we move on, because I think some people might be surprised at that data. But I haven't seen it yet.
Thank you, Mr. Savannah.
And I'll keep this one short. But I just wanted to ask, are extracurriculars and, you know, some other, you know, academic offerings that might not be at every school considered in, you know, some of this program management, our program planning?
We have not talked about extracurriculars. Only some of the unique school local programs that we want to hold dear to those schools, but not anything beyond that. But certainly can be a part of the discussion in a later phase.
Yeah, I don't want to expand the scope or anything right now. I know, I know you all are already doing amazing work, but I just wanted to kind of, you know, put that idea, which can be put a pin in to be talked about later.
All right, let's move on to the second portion, which is the boundary study, community engagement. Ms. Garcia, any new, any things you want to add on to the presentation that has just been shared?
Well, first of all, hi. Good afternoon, everyone. I want you to know that even though I sit in the back, I do hear you loud and clear that the key priority of the board and the plan is to improve our outreach and to engage the communities that we haven't heard in the past. So what you heard a little bit about what Kat was saying and what is in your engagement plan is, how do we best utilize our resources? And, you know, we have resources within our people. Our PCCs are very resourceful in their engagement with their communities that they serve. And I think part of the plan is to leverage what they bring to the table, create opportunities for them to meet with their constituents at a time and a place and with the information that has been curated or has been scaffolded so that it is understandable by the populations that we're trying to reach. So part of the plan includes them adding supplemental meetings to the meetings. I mean, you're still, if you are a linguistically and culturally diverse staff member or a parent that want to engage in the larger meetings, of course, by all means, we will still have interpretation and anything else that you need to be able to participate in that meeting. But for the families that we're really trying to reach, the PCCs will be able to take a chunk of the information, share with them, take notes, so that you're able to then share information, feedback, that is not a survey. I am not a survey fan either. And that will be able to inform. And the hope is that this is the beginning of establishing something that is more current, that it happens on a regular basis, so that any other service, any other engagement that we need, we don't have to be reaching out to people. We will actually come to an existing group. And I got to tell you, yesterday I was super blown away by the engagement in the community advisory group. I think that is a great example of how you involve community to engage community. So I'm really looking forward to see if we can put to practice some of the ideas that they share that were really, really out of the box as we continue to develop this engagement plan.
Ms. Garcia, just for clarification.
Yes.
Does all our schools have a PCC? Do our secondary schools have a PCC? Do you envision this cluster, multiple school meetings or single school meetings?
So for this particular engagement, which is happening this current school year, what we're talking about is using the PCCs that are language-specific. So using the one that is the Korean speaker, the Chinese speaker, the Spanish speakers to reach out to those language groups at this moment. Then depending on how we evolve in the next year and how those PCCs are assigned, then we'll have a couple of strategies that we can use, depending on the outcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleagues, any questions? Ms. Stewart.
I just want to ask, so the community project team, the one that's meeting once a week, is someone from either community engagement, actually, community engagement and communications attending those as well? Okay, great. Because I think, you know, the thing that they are meeting weekly and they're also out in the community, they, I'm sure, have a lot of good input. And again, the goal is that no one's caught by surprise about what this is. And get those questions coming in, because I know there should, the FAQ is probably going to grow as this keeps growing out into the community. Because I've heard some things that already that I'm like, yeah, that's not right. But that's just because there's very little really hard information out there yet. So as this goes, as it grows, I'm sure we'll get lots of more questions and also find out where the holes are and use these meetings to fill in those gaps. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rivera Oven?
Thank you so much. I know there's a lot going on and, again, this is heavy lifting for you guys. But one of the things that I, as somebody who has so much going on, and I can just imagine, you know, when I had kids, just multitasking so many things, I was rebounded three times and I had the same address. So I still have the scars from the last rebounding in Germantown. It was not, it was not pretty. So with that being said, I really appreciate all these sessions. I just want them to be very clear on the times, like that they're one hour and people just can come in and come out, that they can actually access them later. I just want to make sure that they understand that access is, you know, on their side. One of the things we heard, and I thought it was brilliant, was is there a way, when you were talking about going in there and looking at these different options, to just kind of like, I go in there, I put my address, right? And then when I put my address, it pops up and says, these would be your options. So this is how would you be affected by this boundary change? You want to talk a little bit about that?
Why, yes. We were actually playing with it earlier this week and putting our addresses in and testing it. We've heard that from everyone. And so we actually are planning on having that, because what we heard loud and clear, especially from our community project team, was that some people are literally like, what about me? How does this impact me? I want to type my address in, look, vote, you know, give feedback and carry on with my life. And we are okay with people wanting that information before engaging, if that's how we can get them to engage. And so we're acknowledging that for some people, that is the reality of it.
Yeah, and that just, to me, makes so much sense, because then I can tell another parent, oh, by the way, because some parents don't know, some parents don't think this is going to affect them, right? Because we're looking at the middle school and high schools, but then, right, if you put your address, then you'll know, if you have an elementary school kid, that this is a possibility then, that this is going to affect you down the road. So that is, to me, so, just so important. When I'm looking at your schedule, I see Wheaton, John F. Kennedy, Northwest, and Richard Montgomery. Are you going to have a session at Klaxberg or Seneca or Damascus or Poolsville?
So what we did is, for the map, we started really close to the area that, you know, sort of would contain the schools, and then we're going out from there. And then given the dates and the times, we reached out to the schools to ask for space based on sort of the priority of proximity, and then we're growing out from there. And so I have my map where I am keeping track of the big locations where we are, and then we'll be adding in the smaller ones, so that we can really see, it's almost like a heat map of where we're going. And because our survey for this round, our RSVP, everything will be tagged with location, demographics, we'll be able to see so much more of who we're reaching and how.
And you did mention Watkins Mill earlier on. Did I misheard you?
So the schools included in the scope and on our map, we're matching it and we're going from there. And I have a very intricate spreadsheet where we're tracking all of that because math major.
And my last question is, how are you going to handle the challenge of, yes, this is for the boundary studies, but you're still going to have people who are going to want to share about the programs, right? There's still going to be, like, you know, I know the survey is over, you can't just say, oh, yeah, the survey is over, so we don't care. So how are you going to balance that when people want to talk about both and take that feedback during this process?
So I can answer a little bit and then I will probably turn it over to Nikki. But together, together, because the work is so connected that we spend a lot of time together, we plan together, we're going to have to work together to make sure that information that's shared with us is shared with that team, if it is directly related to the work that they're doing and vice versa. And we are also in many spaces together, so that we can hear what is going on and be aware of it, so that we're also getting that feedback as we're going through our process. But like you said, it is very challenging.
Thank you.
No, I agree. I mean, we are doing a lot of this together. I do think that at some point, I mean, we're kind of working this way, parallel, and at some point, we have to intersect and probably take our work together out into the communities. But right now, we're trying to keep some of this separate in terms of being very clear about-
And I understand that, but I don't think sometimes the community would understand that. So you're going to have them, you know, you're going to have them there and they're going to want to tell you their piece about the programming before they even tell you about the boundary. And I just want to make sure that, I guess, both teams are there, because this is what I, this is my concern. It shouldn't be one or the other, right? It should be, well, today we just, you know, going to talk just about the boundary thing, because I think then you turn people off and you make them angry. Okay? So this is already an unpleasant thing for a lot of people because of previous experiences, right? So I think part of it is to ensure that people are able to share what they need to share, but for you to take that information and see how it's going to be valuable to making decisions, whether it's programming or boundary. Because I think right now, there's a little, even folks who are very involved, they're not seeing that difference. They're kind of seeing this as something that is together. And I just want to make sure that as a system, we're able to take both and then digest it, if that makes sense.
Ms. Sevastri.
So have you shared a communications plan for the boundary study with the board? Where could I find that? So I'm hearing PCCs, I'm hearing principal message, but in order to saturate the community, this is a campaign, right? I need to see, could you just remind me where that communications plan was?
So we have shared the draft communication plan with the board via email, and we will send it in your bulletin tomorrow as well. We wanted to have this conversation so that we could more fully bring the feedback into that plan before we publish it more broadly. So we'll be happy to be sure you have that draft. But we're also going to be, again, continuing to expand it based on this conversation.
And how will you handle the summer? Because we always say that the summer, people check out, principals aren't shooting emails to the community. So that's a critical couple months. We don't want people to get left behind, because decisions are, this is an iterative process, right? So how do you, how do you plan to handle the summer?
So, yeah, I think we will continue our work in reminding the folks, because the survey is going to be on for several weeks into the summer, because our meetings don't end till first week in June, which means, you know, we're going to have to keep the survey open. So we'll have to, you know, work with our communications team to keep, you know, sending that messages out to the community and, you know, also continually reminding the principals for, because that- for, because that, even though the survey might have a time window, the opportunity to, you know, that ask a question, that's going to remain on our website throughout this whole process. So we want to, you know, constantly get that feedback. So that is a great point. We need to constantly send that messages out through our, you know, principals and our regular channels on a weekly basis to remind folks to that, you know, folks that who, you know, haven't been caught up, go back to the website, they can still watch the video, look at the options again. And then that option to provide feedback is not going to be just with the public information meetings, that is going to continue. So we will have to continuously remind the folks throughout the summer because at the end of that summer period, when the school restarts in September, we're going to be, you know, going back with refined options. So that is a great point. We will continue to send, send out those reminders throughout the summer.
Thank you.
Ms. Mumm.
Thank you. I just want to bring up in the plan, I've noticed a lot of really wonderful virtual and online resources. I think that's fantastic. But just like Ms. Howe said, I think it would be great if there could be something that goes in a take-home folder, just as we talk a lot about how, you know, we want to make sure there's lots of different access points. I think that's one that we're missing. Similarly, I think about the other place that parents spend a lot of time, and that's in that car rider loop, or, you know, in the parking lot waiting. If there's something that we can do, if there's a QR code that you can scan while you wait, I think we could catch a lot of people that way. Thank you.
If I may, yeah, summertime is absolutely a time to communicate. And one of the wonderful things that we'll be able to do is to react to how well we've done for, as we perform these most, of these upcoming communication and engagement sessions. And then last night, during the Board of Education Communications Advisory Committee meeting, there was a vigorous discussion about QR codes. And I think the predominant feedback was that they're valuable and because they're simple. In fact, we got great use with a QR code because it provides easy access during our most recent Teacher of the Year announcement. At that gala-type event, we provided a way for people to download the photos and it's gotten great use. Those photos are being downloaded significantly. So they are valuable. I know we're talking about something different, but there, we will provide other ways. And paper, as you just mentioned, the car loop, paper is just different. It's not old and unvaluable. But having something at schools that people can hand out, especially if a question arises, I think you know, is still a valuable tool. Yeah.
If I may add, Carla, I heard you talking about, like, this should be blasted everywhere. We had conversations about even having lawn signs and posters in the libraries and leverage our community partners so that, you know, put it in, and then insert in the Latino newspaper and the grocery store. So I think there is an opportunity for all of that to be thought a little bit more carefully as to where we're going to put our investment. Some of those ideas were also brought up, like, you know, how do you involve the houses of worship in getting the information out and posting information? So I think we haven't put all that in the plan, but I think this will be a good opportunity for us to include some of that.
And if I may, that's an important point. The plan represents what we know and intend to do and what we know right now. The website will be the place where the most updated information will be, including reminders where you can get information as we develop those materials and get them in places, we can report where those places are, such as public libraries, for example.
Ms. Savanna.
All right, perfect. I just want to start out by thanking you guys for all the work that you guys have done on the communication side of this. I know both Ms. Malchody and you, Mr. Mumm, have been incredibly receptive. You know, when I said, you know, can we get some more students on here? The conversation was excellent in terms of getting those students and really having some of that diverse outreach. That was really, really great. So I just want to say thank you for that. As someone who has been through a boundary change, right, has gone to six different MCPS schools, some of which were from boundaries, some of which were, you know, my own personal choice, I just want to say, this is all obviously a very difficult time and you guys have done a great job with that. And then kind of going back to the idea, one specific question I, or ask I did have was if we could report the data of the number of website clicks in addition to the survey data, I think that would just be, you know, a great, great way to kind of do a quick, broad-range look at what we, the engagement that we've had.
Ms. Montoya.
Hi, thank you so much. So I'm a current parent of two elementary school kids and things are always feeling wild, right? We're all over the place, we're in the car line, we're in the walkers' line. So all of these comments, like, I don't think we could do enough communication, right? There's no such thing as too much in this instance. The lawn signs with the QR codes at libraries or in front of the schools for parents who are walking in or waiting to get your kids, if you've ever taken a call with me at 3:30, I'm probably in the car line. So I think having things that maybe can be passed out, I know sometimes, and especially in the lower elementary car lines, there's staff out there. So there is a staff member actually bringing your child to the car. Maybe the staff can hand out a quarter sheet of paper with a QR code, things like that. Remind is also an app that I find to be really helpful. I know a lot of schools use that to send out messages. When my principal sends a message with a link, I'm jumping on Zoom. They usually, sometimes they'll send them out five or 10 minutes before the meeting. It's really great. But we want to make sure we're also providing these materials for our principals. We're at the end of the year, I'm not sure what our supplies budgets are looking like, how much paper is left. So just to the extent that we are going to hand out paper items or lawn signs, can we make sure that we're providing that to the schools rather than expecting them to use what may actually not be left of their budget at this point in the year? But yes, I think any of those ways and as frequently as you can would be really wonderful.
All right. Ms. Stewart.
Because everyone has such great ideas, I just wanted to put out the civic associations and to use some of our partners. I even talked to a regional service manager, like the Silver Springs Regional Service, and they would also help us get the information.
That's right, we have six regional centers in Montgomery County.
And so, but these are all great ideas. The one thing I would like to see in the draft plan is, what kind of engagement are you going to do when? So more of a timeline, maybe like every, it doesn't have to necessarily be week by week, but maybe a monthly or every two week, like, this is where we're going to go to lawn sign, we're going to put out the lawn signs here, this is when we're going to do the libraries, this is when we're going to send emails, specific, whatever it is, just so we as board members can kind of track and ticking off some of these great ideas. So otherwise, we just kind of look at each other and shrug. Thank you.
Ms. Yang, just one, Community Engagement, we love Community Engagement, so we could talk for hours, but just plain language, plain language, plain language, right? I looked at the text that I received as a parent about the meetings that we've had and, you know, save the day, upcoming public information meetings on public schools' boundary studies. What does that have to do with me? You know, so even, the text is critical for me as a parent. I don't, you know, I'm sure you have data on what parents prefer, but, you know, just reemphasizing, what does this have to do with me? Why should I click on this link? Why do I need to explore more? So just thank you for indulging me.
No, all great points, great questions from the colleagues. This is something that we have to get right. So thank you so much. I would like to move to item 10.1, that's for information, is construction progress report. No action is required of the board at the moment.
Oh, we're done with that?
We're done with that, yeah. All right, thank you to the staff. Then there's item 11, which is Board of Education item. May I have a motion to approve item 11.1 and 11.2 in block?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. Okay, thank you. Now I'm turning to item 11.3, is previous new business. And so, Ms. Wolf, I think you have some, something to introduce.
Thank you. Meeting before last, we brought forward the Community Engagement and School Safety Resolution. And so today, we're bringing it back, it was laid on the table at that time. And because I went home sick, the last meeting, it didn't move forward. So today, we want to bring that back to the table for resolution and for a vote. The resolution came to the table on March the 18th. Today, we'll take our final consideration. As I have said, as a board, we are committed to a safe learning environment where teachers and students feel secure and are able to focus on the critical mission of teaching and learning. We know that safety and security requires ongoing communication and collaboration between the school system and the community. So I will read the resolve and call for the vote. Resolve that the Superintendent of Schools will solicit student, staff, parent, and community input on the current CEO program within the context of school safety. And be it further resolved, the Superintendent of Schools will solicit student, staff, parent, and community input from each of the regions of the county on the following questions. How well is the current program working? What, if any, are the challenges with the CEO program? And what are the opportunities for improvement? And be it further resolved that the Superintendent of Schools provides an update to the board on matters delineated aboard above by November 2025. Now, we heard a lot of conversation in, in public testimony about the resolution. Those questions were designed to get people talking. The discussion does not have to be solely limited to those questions. However, it's not really about the SRO program. I understand that may come up, but what we're really trying to do here is to evaluate the effectiveness of our CEO program and whether or not any changes could be made.
So there's a resolution on the table. Can I get a motion to, Ms. Wolf, move it? Can I get a second?
A second.
Or in favor, or any discussion. Seeing none, we're going to vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous with this present and one online. Thank you, everyone. We're going to move to item 11.4. Are there any new business items for the board to consider this afternoon?
Yes, President Yang. So I would like to introduce a resolution about student access to procurement opportunities. So whereas MCPS has an annual budget that exceeds $3.6 billion, a portion of which is spent on products necessary for the operation of the school system, which range from physical products such as textbooks and curricular materials to various technologies that improve operational efficiency alongside various services such as DJs and decorators. And whereas student perspective and lived experience can provide valuable insight into the school system's needs and areas for improvement. And whereas students who have developed products that will benefit the school community should have an avenue to share their ingenuity and initiative through the MCPS procurement process. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Superintendent of Schools will ensure that MCPS students are aware of the process used by the school system to procure items needed and used by the school system throughout the course of the year. And be it further resolved that the student, that the Superintendent of Schools will develop a process by which students can submit their proposals for areas of need in their schools and the solutions the students have developed to address those needs. And be it further resolved that students be given an equal opportunity to compete for open procurement items. And be it further resolved that the Superintendent of Schools provides an update to the board on the matters delineated above by January 2026.
So Mr. Savanna just introduced a resolution. And I'm turning to my colleagues to see if anyone have any questions or comments. Ms. Silvestri.
Mr. Savanna, can you help me understand, what is the problem we're trying to solve here?
So it's not necessarily a problem that we're trying to solve as much as we're trying to, you know, be able to leverage the ingenuity of our students and give them an opportunity to get some real-world experience and interest them into the idea of problem solving and how they can really benefit our school system, right? So if a student has an idea for something that they think that could be, can make their school a better place, right? Whether that be through a specific technology or through something that they want to pitch to MCPS, giving them the opportunity and a process by which they can kind of walk that, walk through those steps and, you know, really be heard by the school system. So again, they would have to follow the same standards as everyone else, but giving them a process to do so.
And they can't currently engage with the system?
So the problem is not that they can't engage, it's that there's no clear process by which they can engage, right? So it's, to make that a little bit more clear, like, there are avenues by which you can engage the school system, but without a clear, dedicated process, right? Students are often, especially if they're trying to pitch something that's not, you know, necessarily an open procurement item, it's very difficult to kind of walk through the steps, right, to try and get in contact.
Oh, okay, so this is, even if we're not procuring it?
So one, one part of this is a process by which students can submit proposals for areas of need in their school and the solutions the students have developed to address those needs. So if there's a problem and they come up with a solution, right, MCPS will create a process by which they can submit their proposal. It doesn't mean that the proposals will be utilized right then and there, right? It doesn't mean that the students will be paid out for their proposals, but it means that, you know, the school system says, wow, this is kind of a good idea, can we maybe look to incorporate this? Or is this something that maybe we want to put out an RFP for and ask to compete on a larger procurement scale?
Okay, I understand, thank you.
I saw Ms. Montoya's slide came on second. Go ahead, Ms. Montoya.
Thank you. I guess I'm concerned about a cost to this. Initially, I understood it to be kind of an avenue into the procurement process, but then based on Ms. Silvestri's question, or rather, the answer to her question, I'm also understanding then it contains perhaps establishing an entirely new process, given we have 160,000 students and, and quite frankly, I mean, you guys really have really, you know, lots of ideas, lots of conversations, groups. And so I anticipate there would be a lot of students that might have something to propose and we wouldn't want to be, you know, picking and choosing who gets to propose. And so I'm just wondering how we, as a school system, manage that? Are we then establishing a new office? Do we have, is one FTE going to be necessary or more? Do we have to have one per high school or cluster? And in times where we're really struggling to stretch every dollar that we have for our students, I'm wondering why the current procurement system wouldn't be adequate with perhaps an, you know, I don't want to say an education outreach campaign, but just making sure that our students know how they can access that. And then reminding our staff that our students should be treated as any other vendor would going through the procurement process in the sense of taking them seriously.
Yeah, so the idea behind developing a process by which students can submit proposals doesn't necessarily mean that you have to take every single proposal, right? What it means is that you set a series of standards that students have to rise to meet, right? So it doesn't mean that, you know, a student says, well, you know, I have a problem with, you know, some very specific thing in my school and I just want to fix it doing this, right? Doesn't necessarily mean that that is the entirety of their proposal versus a proposal that very clearly outlines a large, wide-scale problem, right? And there are clear, detailed steps and solutions by which MCPS has created a set of standards. As far as I know, I don't think that would take up any more resources than, than we currently use in, within our current procurement system. I'll ask administration if they believe that it would take any more resources. And if it does, then maybe we would have to alter, but I don't, I don't think.
Well, I guess, but I guess that's part of my question, right? So if we're now allowing additional, let's just say paperwork, right? Because there's going to be some sort of submission of something, whether it's online or through paper, someone has to receive those, look through them to see, well, who has, you know, like a full-fledged proposal with, you know, different parts versus, maybe my fifth grader has an idea and him and his friends read a couple sentences and send it in, right? Someone has to at least receive that to look at it and go, okay. And then honestly, you have to also respond to the fifth grader, right? Are we just going to ignore them? So I'm not sure how this wouldn't require additional staffing and resources and, at the end of the day, money.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Montoya. I'm going to move to Ms. Rivera-Orvin.
So I really appreciate, and I think this is, was this in response to the Poolsville group of kids who had that great idea about the app?
I think it's in, it's in response to, so I'll give some of the background context. I had posted on my, on my social media. Students, let me know if you have. I had posted on my, on my social media, students, let me know if you have any interest or any ideas for things that you might want to pitch to the school system.
Right.
So I received a number of emails and Instagram DMs from students with tremendous amounts of work and time and effort put in, right? A lot of these which were passion projects that they were like, how can we foray this into a legitimate, you know, contract or some sort of operating agreement with the school system?
Yeah, no, and I guess, I appreciate that. If we should be treating our students who, if we have an RFP for a mobile app or for transportation app, and they have a great idea, we should be treating them like any other vendor, right? With the same, with the same care, and they might need a little bit more guidance than others, but so some, some new businesses or some new vendors, they need it as well. So I feel, I'm just trying to understand, how is the process different, different than what we have right now, which we should be doing that anyway for, for anybody, versus, versus this process? Because I'm hearing two things. I'm hearing about ideas, which I think is great, but I'm also hearing procurement. So I'm having a little bit of a hard time making the difference among those two.
All right. Thank you, colleagues, for your comments and questions to Mr. Savanna. So today, he's introducing it. In order for this to sit on the table for consideration for the next meeting, I will need a second from the colleagues. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So this will sit on the table, and you will come back to the board on May 22nd. Thank you, everyone. I'm going to move on. Oh, before I go on, are there any other new business to introduce? All right. 12.1 item is informational summary, and there's no action required of the board at this time. Item 13, we do need some actions. It's adjournment. May I have a motion?
I will gratefully and gladly move for adjournment at 5:48.
Second.
We did actually really good. It's only 15 minutes difference. All in favor, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Good night.